The School Board Work Session begins in two minutes. Please take your seats. Again, the School Board Work Session begins in two minutes. The School Board Work Session begins in one minute. Please take your seats. Again, the School Board Work Session begins in one minute.
Good morning. I now call the November twentieth, two thousand and twenty-five Administrative Briefing and Work Session of the Marion County School Board to order at nine A.M. Please silence your electronic devices to avoid disturbing others. Mirroring and modeling how our students begin each day, I ask that you please pause for us with a moment of silence. Please join me. I will now read our Board Commitment Statement. We are the Marion County School District Leadership Team. When we come together to work, we are efficient, effective, and productive. Our three most important characteristics are dedicated, transparent, and individually responsible. To work well together, we must demonstrate respect, confront reality, and be accountable. We will always put students first. We will leave a legacy of success. I would like to ask the School Board Attorney to explain the rules for this public workshop. Good morning, Attorney Powers.
Good morning and thank you. This work session is a public meeting as defined in Florida's Sunshine Law. The Board is dedicated to full transparency in its meetings and its work. In compliance with the Sunshine Law, the Board has adopted uniform meeting procedures, including the right for citizens to participate. The Board will allow public comment regarding any work session item listed on today's agenda at the appropriate time. Speakers must fill out a request form located in the lobby and hand it to the Board Clerk. After the Board and Superintendent have completed their discussion on a particular agenda item, the Board Clerk will call the Speaker's name in the order received. Each Speaker will have three minutes. As required by Sunshine Law, the Board must maintain orderly conduct and decorum throughout this meeting. Speakers may criticize subject matter and decisions in a respectful manner, but not people. Finally, speakers must be very careful not to violate the privacy rights of others, especially students and their family members, by mentioning names or other identifying information. Thank you for your attention to these important rules.
Thank you, Attorney Powers. Ms. Martinez Young, can you please provide the proof of publication for today's meeting?
The notice for the November twentieth, two thousand and twenty-five Work Session was published in the Ocala Gazette on November seventh, two thousand and twenty-five. Proof of publication has been attached to Board Ducks under proof of publication.
Thank you, ma'am. I want to welcome Mr. Whitehouse, our Deputy Superintendent, who is here today in Dr. Brewer's absence as she is attending to some other business for the district. So, uh, welcome, Mr. Whitehouse. And we are going to start with item four point one, which is the Strategic Plan Update for Goal Five.
Thank you, Chair, and I will ask Mr. Kevin Christian, our Director of Public Relations, come to the podium. He is going to provide some updates on Goal Five, uh, along with Ms. Megan McAmal.
Good morning to each of you. Wow, it sounds voluminous here. Can you hear me okay? All right, great. It is my pleasure to be here this morning and to share this podium with... Come on and introduce yourself.
I'm Yomlee Gonzalez, Communications Manager.
Megan McAmal, Public Education Foundation of Marion County.
We want to share an update on our Goal Five of our strategic plan this morning, so hopefully you've had a chance to look over some of those materials. But Goal Five focuses on enhancing community engagement and communications by increasing stakeholder dialogue, partnerships, and collaboration to meet their needs and celebrate success. The key strategies include expanding community partnerships to support student success, strengthening two-way communications with families through improved transparency and engagement, and enhancing internal communication by improving information access and recognizing employee contributions. You will see Goal Five there focuses, as I mentioned, on community engagement and communications. Our next slide is somewhat small, and I apologize for that, but there's a ton of information that I will highlight there. I think what is most important is our target column, which is the blue shaded column, and then the, the far right column, which has green and some pink shading. I'll go through those. These are the outcome metrics by which we are measuring success on Goal Five. First off, we are hoping to increase the percentage of families satisfied with communication. Happy to share that that this year's number is up to seventy-eight percent. We're just about at our target of eighty percent, and of course, that's up from sixty-six percent last year, so we're pleased with those results. The next outcome metric is to increase the percentage of staff satisfied with communication. And as of today, we do not have that number because that survey has not been completed yet this year, but based on the informal feedback that we've received and the comments that we've received from around the district, we believe that number will be significantly higher. We also want to increase the number of followers on our social media platforms. That's up nearly twenty-one percent to a little over twenty-seven and a half thousand and above target by ten percent. We also want to increase engagement on our website, and I want to point out here that last year, you remember, we switched website platforms. So, last year's number was a little over four million. When I checked last week, we had over seven million visits to our website, so that number has jumped significantly. We're also increasing engagement on Facebook. We're up nine percent over last year, and we are at seventy percent of the goal. You'll notice that the only pink box on the page is dealing with increasing engagement on X. That is actually down forty-four percent. We believe that's primarily due to the brand change from Twitter to X. Plus, we are really not posting as often on X as we are on Facebook, Instagram, and YouTube, and we find the same true with our school-based sites as well. They're focusing more on Facebook, which tends to have a larger, um, audience. We're also increasing engagement on YouTube, and I'll share some more data later on in the presentation, but we are up thirty-six percent and just eight percent shy of our target. And then the last box you'll see there also has an asterisk in it. That is to increase the number of community partnerships, and Mrs. McAmal will share more information about that when she comes to the podium. All right, moving on to Strategy Five A, which is expanding and monitoring community partnerships to increase student learning opportunities. We've been using the Peachjar eFlyer service now for just under ten years, and a lot of people may say, "Well, what is that?" It's basically an eFlyer service where years ago, we used to help community organizations by distributing their paper-based flyers. As Dr. James knows, we don't do that anymore, at least pretty much across the board. We use an eFlyer service that is far more affordable than actually printing paper and counting those papers out by classroom and having the teacher distribute it to each student. So, in just the last year, we are up in terms of approval over two percent over the previous year. You'll see there, we delivered just under two million emails. That's insane. And one million impressions with a sixty-six percent open rate, which is far above the average, so we're happy about that. We avoided thirty-five and a half million sheets of paper. I don't know how many reams that is. I didn't do that math, but that's a lot of paper from, from the warehouse and from local print shops. And also saved forty-two hundred trees in the process. And I was asked a question, "Well, how about, how about the labor involved?" Peachjar used to provide that figure to us, but over the last three or four years, that has been phased out because most districts don't even do paper-based flyers anymore. So, we're still happy to provide that service, and as I said, it's very affordable and a great alternative to the paper-based flyers. We also continue with our Leadership MCPS program now in Class Four, and I believe some of you have already met many of those class participants. They're on, on pace to graduate in May. We also have learning opportunities and engagement opportunities when it comes to various events that we are part of or that we sponsor, including our Veterans Day Ceremony, which was last week, the coldest day of the year, as we recall. That's the nineteenth year in a row that our school district has provided that service and that learning opportunity to our community. We also have the upcoming Ocala Christmas Parade on December thirteenth. This will be the twenty-fifth year that the school district has provided coverage of that event for our community. And also, the Marion County Student Media Festival also celebrates its twenty-fifth year of success next April, so we're excited about the opportunities presented there. Moving on to our next slide, we continue with Dads on Duty Program in several of our schools, which offers a great opportunity for male role models to engage with students and just have a great relationship with them. Yeah, I'm horrible at, I'm gonna give this, because I am horrible at that. So, we're happy to have that program. Our Back-to-School Community Give Back Event, which I would say is one of the largest events of the year that involves our community and the district together, over six thousand backpacks filled with school supplies given out free of charge, largely due to the Community Foundation of Marion County. And lots and lots of volunteers. Of course, your engagement with state legislators plays a huge role in securing the success of many of the programs in our district. And as well, the student school board members that sit beside you on the dais, I think, have contributed greatly and talk about a learning opportunity for those twelve, fourteen students that take part in that each year. It's, it's really tremendous. We also have formalized partnerships with the Ocala CEP. We're thankful that they have been able to participate in the last couple of years in our, our groundbreakings and our ribbon cuttings and grand openings. Of course, we have the Fitness and Nutrition in Schools Program with our Marion County Hospital District. And then finally, Career Source, C L M, Citrus Lee V. Marion, which, uh, partners with us for our career expo events, both in terms of students exploring careers and our adults in our community wanting to become employees of Marion County Public Schools. So, it's a great opportunity for partnerships there. Continuing on, I'm gonna ask Megan to come forward and share on our next few slides.
Thank you, Kevin, and good morning, Board Chair, Dr. James, School Board Members, Mr. Whitehouse. The Public Education Foundation is proud to serve as your direct support organization, five oh one C three nonprofit supporting Marion County Public Schools, with our actions focusing community interest on public education to initiate support, underwrite projects and programs benefiting students, teachers, administrators, and our entire school district. And our work supports the district in many different ways. I'll be speaking to Strategy Five Point A for Goal Five for expanding and monitoring partnerships to increase learning opportunities. So, we'll start with our expanded partnership into Year Three with our Safe Schools Teams to share an update on what we have been working on. This is all thanks to our partnership with Mackenzie's Moment. At the end of last year, we completed three M security film applications on Windows at every single school across our district. We contributed to purchasing an additional item for our Gaggle software programming, and this year, you will slowly see, there are security shades being installed on every classroom door window across our schools. They have all been outfitted, and the installation is happening school by school, uh, and more to come. That is all thanks to our partnership with Mackenzie's Moment. In total, a contribution of six hundred and ten thousand dollars to make schools safer, faster. We continued our partnership with the district's Mental Health and Wellness Team, but this time, we switched our efforts to support attendance initiatives, attendance banners. We will be purchasing the new district attendance absenteeism brochures, and we recently established a donor support fund for school attendance initiatives. Now, in regards to supporting career and technical education opportunities, recently, you would have seen the World Equestrian Center hosted their annual festival, and through that partnership, we were able to travel the county to eight different schools, taking celebrity chefs to meet with our students and provide relevant and real-world insight into career opportunities in culinary and hospitality. Our students were then able to go to the World Equestrian Center and work alongside those chefs during the festival, culminating in a student cooking competition where our students cooked in front of an audience of seventeen hundred attendees and worked alongside celebrity chefs like Duff Goldman. At the end of the weekend, we were presented a check for twenty-five thousand dollars. Every single dollar will go back into our culinary programs, providing resources, student equipment, uniforms, and experience, and that partnership has now totaled a hundred thousand dollars to support our schools. We entered into Year Two of our partnership with the HCA Foundation to support our healthcare pathways in a total of sixty thousand dollars as an investment to increase student interest in healthcare careers, increase participation in our pathways, ultimately increasing our certification completion rates. Pictured here is the recent CPR and First Aid Certification Training Class that we sponsored through the foundation for more than one hundred students. This past year, through this funding support, a hundred and six CNA students earned their CPR certification, eighty-four students participated in job shadowing at HCA, and six hundred and, six hundred and forty students completed the Stop the Bleed training, thanks to this HCA partnership. Additional examples of partnerships that are new or expanded through our foundation, the Ocala Film Derby. Pictured here, we have Lori Zink. She is the Chair of the Film Derby Initiative, and this year, we increased our student support thanks to generous donors in our community to offer more than fifteen thousand dollars in scholarships for students participating in the Derby Initiative. Pictured next is from a recent event we hosted at the Silver River Museum and Environmental Education Center, another partnership through our foundation, where we announced a new opportunity, thanks to Duke Energy. We will host a STEM Summer Research Academy in summer of two thousand and twenty-six in an extension of the Big Spring STEM Program. This new investment partnership from Duke brought their partnership dollars to a total of thirty thousand dollars for this fiscal school year. We continued partnering with Florida Kid Care to support attendance initiatives, continue to support the Kids Tag Art Program as their fiscal agent, and we expanded our partnership with U F S, lasting our center's New World Reading Initiative. It was new for last year, but this year, we are expanding into four more schools. This partnership opportunity promotes literacy from VPK through fifth grades. We have been providing books. We've assisted with presentations for literacy skills, resources for families to establish at-home libraries with free book deliveries, and in total, an additional thirty-seven thousand dollars in funding have gone to the schools we have partnered with to increase family engagement and school-based literacy efforts. And last, I'd like to announce a new partnership. This was new as of last month. Able Trust supports youth programs, helping students with disabilities develop their employment goals and learn about post-secondary and career options as they plan their future. We are proud that Able Trust is partnering with our local education foundation to the tune of thirty thousand dollars to support Hillcrest School and Bridgeway Academy's Work Study Program. So, we will be partnering with both of those schools with this new initiative. And last, I will be talking about the foundation's signature programs and how we are working to increase learning opportunities. Our two student scholarship programs, Take Stock in Children and the Senior Scholarship Program, totaled three hundred and eighty thousand dollars to support students entering college in the fall of two thousand and twenty-five. Pictured here are two of our major supporters, Project SOS and HUGS Charity. Both choose to invest in supporting post-secondary educational opportunities for deserving at-risk low-income youth. Through the Foundation's Tools for Teaching Program, last year, we provided two hundred and sixty thousand dollars in classroom supplies through the hands of our teachers to equip their students to be successful in classroom. Our partnerships this year, just quarter one alone, have already exceeded the total amount from last fiscal school year. And we have new donor opportunities happening all the time. In fact, Tuesday night, at the Education Foundation, we had a new sponsor, Florida Gulf Coast University, come in and help host a Thanksgiving-themed top teacher shopping experience. We had one hundred and nine teachers from the district come and visit us and get over four thousand dollars in classroom supplies for their students. From our school business partnership program, we work to match businesses with local schools, ensuring that at least one business partner is dedicated to each school. We will once again this year exceed the prior year's support from our business and donor community. We have a historic number of matches right now, eighty-nine, totaling an investment of three hundred and eighty thousand dollars in our schools. I would like to thank our School Board Members. I know that each of you personally advocate for the relationships we have with our business community. Through Take Stock in Children, we not only awarded three hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars this year to our graduating students, but we provided services to two hundred and fifty-six students throughout the year. Our team recruited, trained, matched one hundred and seventy-six volunteer mentors. I'd like to say a special thank you to Chair Dr. James, Vice Chair Conrad, Dr. Campbell, and Mr. Whitehouse for being dedicated, passionate volunteer mentors for Take Stock in Children. Collectively, our volunteers donated three thousand one hundred and fifty-one mentoring sessions for students in our high schools, and our college success coaches through Take Stock conducted five hundred and sixteen college coaching sessions to help students be prepared for post-secondary opportunities. Within our Grants for Great Idea programs, we provide opportunities for teachers and principals to request funding for school initiatives in the key areas of STEM, literacy, increasing graduation rates, assisting low-performing students, career and technical education, student resiliency, and supporting our students in need. To best align with the district's priorities determined at the start of this fiscal school year, we look to also align our Grants for Great Idea allocations to tie specifically to teacher quality and student attendance initiatives. So, initiatives, so I'm very proud that many of the grants we will be awarding this year will help support attendance on campus. In fact, before we break for Thanksgiving, teachers and principals will be receiving the news about their Grant for Great Idea applications. We have just determined one hundred and ten thousand dollars will be funded. In comparison, last year at this time, the award amount was sixty-one thousand, so we have almost doubled because of donor and community partnerships. And now, I'd like to invite Mr. Kevin Christian back up, and I'll keep the clicker, Kevin.
Please do.
Moving on to Strategy Five B, we look at our communication efforts that use two-way district communications and engagement with families and the community, and these include Fast Facts, which was revamped in March of this year for a cleaner and more mobile-friendly look. That publication is emailed internally and posted on our website, including on the School Board page for public viewing. And in the last year, forty-five thousand and thirty-three visits have been logged with an average read time of two minutes, and that's about how long it should take to read the entire issue, so happy with that. Moving on to Skylert Messaging, we have sent sixty-eight district messages since our last update in January of this year. The average success rate is still around ninety-three percent, which is considered very high by any mass communication standard. When we look at our YouTube channel and the videos streamed there, including your board meetings and work sessions like today's, seven thousand and eight hundred and forty-one views have been logged. That equates to one thousand nine hundred and seventy-four hours, but this is what I find most interesting. The average watch time is just over fifteen minutes. Now, well, you may say, "Well, that's not much for a four-hour work session." Remember, with streaming, you have the ability to scrub and find just the portion of the video that you want, so. We have overall two hundred and three thousand total views this year on our YouTube channel. That's twenty-eight thousand watch hours for all of our videos that we post there, two point one million impressions. Moving on next to our next request platform, this is where we process public records requests. We've utilized that platform to handle two hundred and thirty-eight requests over the last twelve months, ten of which are still open, so that equates to a ninety-six percent closure rate. And the previous year, we had two hundred and twenty-two, and two years ago, a hundred and sixty-nine. So, the number and the complexity of public records requests continues to increase year after year after year. Continuing with Strategy Five B, our media releases, we shared sixty-one of those in the last year versus sixty-seven the previous year. Those are shared online and distributed via email and via Skylert messaging, depending on when it's appropriate based on the topic. These helped generate two thousand one hundred and sixty-nine media mentions. That includes print, broadcast, and online, and that also includes three point seven million impressions on social media alone. Now, I've never used this figure before or this component in our updates, but I, I wanted to do it this year because I find the number very, very interesting. Those media releases and other media events that attracted attention to our district generated three point five million dollars in coverage, earned media coverage. The return on investment, when you consider the whole PR team, which is seven of us, the return on investment is eight hundred and sixty percent. I'm proud of that number. That's a lot of media interactions with not many people on the team, so I'm grateful to the team for that. Moving on, surveys, we continue using internal and external surveys to gauge audience engagement. Those surveys include Skylert Messaging, which does have that option, and we've used it on occasion. Also, Survey Monkey Tools, along with Cognia, which administers its own surveys based on district input, and the importance of those surveys continues as part of our district Cognia accreditation. School marquees continue to be, I believe, one of our most underutilized forms of communication, and while some may argue that they are not truly two-way in nature, uh, we share information that a lot of times solicits an action of attendance or some kind of action on the parent or family or student's part, so I think there's some level of two-way involvement there. I'm always looking at school marquees, and I'm the first to say, "Your school marquees out of date. You need to put something up there." Even if you don't have an upcoming event, put a message up there, because it's the one thing people look at every single time they go onto a school campus. Our snippet stories, we have nine thousand seven hundred and seventy-eight YouTube views on these stories. That equates to a hundred and out, a hundred and forty hours of viewing or a fifty-one second average viewing time. And again, that may not seem like much, but those stories tend to be one to two minutes in length, so many times, people are watching virtually the entire story. We also share these stories on social media, and many times, we are creating our own newsroom where traditional media watch those feeds, and often, they will pick up the stories that we have done, and they will come and cover those stories themselves. One example most recently is the Time Capsule that was opened at Osceola Middle School. There was an Orlando station that actually took our story and put it on the air, so we are our own newsroom. Let's see, we also have a special video that we put together for you, so if you will put your eyes on that center monitor there on stage. I will apologize in advance, we noticed a couple of misspellings after this report was posted online, so we'll get those corrected, but this, this kind of encapsulates many of the stories that we covered in the last year. But this kind of encapsulates many of the stories that we covered in the last year, and also the power of those stories in terms of reaching our community. Back up, there we go. I want to say a special thanks to the team. We asked them to just look at some of the stories that generated a lot of attention over the last year and put that video together, and lots of data with that, so I'm grateful to the team. They many times are behind the scenes, and you don't see them, but we're grateful for their efforts. And so before I have Yamalie come up, I want to share with you that in addition to the content in this report, the Public Relations Team also handles lots and lots of work orders and track requests for audio systems in school cafeterias, stadiums, car line sound systems, as well as video production studios. We handle all of that behind the scenes. So there's lots more that goes on than just communications in the general term. We work a lot to enable those communication efforts and make sure that they're successful and possible with that equipment. So Yamalie.
Good morning. Hope you all enjoyed the video. We're fortunate to have such a talented team behind the camera, recording, producing, and editing everything you just saw. We're incredibly grateful for the work that they do, including managing the audio and visuals for every work session and board meeting, as well as ICROC and Sales Tax Committee meetings. Over the past year, we've made social media a priority, and as you heard earlier, we not only boosted engagement, but also surpassed our 25,000 follower goal, finishing at 27,511 across all platforms. We're active on Facebook, YouTube, X, and now Instagram. While we shifted some focus away from X, we still post regularly to reach as many people as possible. Please feel, it's good. Please feel free to scan the QR code. This links to our district link tree, where you'll find the district's homepage and all our platforms in one spot. The same QR code was shared through MCPS Connect, which I'll talk about shortly. From November 7, 2024, through October 31 of this year, we had more than 3.6 million views on Facebook, along with 60.2,000 interactions, which are likes, comments, and shares, and a reach of 1.8 million. All of this came from 322 posts, giving us an engagement rate of 3.2%, which is higher than Facebook's average of 1% to 2%. While we also reactivated our Instagram account, and in October alone, we saw 13.3,000 views, 262 interactions, and a reach of 1.3,000. And as of yesterday, I've been practicing this, we have 607 followers, which we started at 505. So that is great for one month. One of our goals moving forward is to grow our student audience. The content on Instagram looks very different from what we post on Facebook and X. It's more student-centered, and we're working on new ways to get students involved, so they feel encouraged to follow along. What I'm most excited to share is the reinvention of the learning line, now called MCPS Connect. Back in July, Dr. Brewer asked us to rethink the learning line and make it more user-friendly. From there, I had the chance to work with Dr. Campbell on new concepts, and I also met with several principals who shared the challenges they shared with the old format. Using that feedback and with strong support from our technology team, thank you to technology, we developed MCPS Connect. It's a weekly memo sent to all school counselors, assistant principals, coordinators, directors, principals, including charter, district and school secretaries, student service managers, and supervisors. They are also encouraged to share it with anyone who they might find the information helpful. The MCPS Connect homepage is easily accessible on the front page of the SharePoint for all internal staff. MCPS Connect was introduced during this year's Leadership Summit, and we followed that with a meeting for all directors and secretaries to explain the new weekly submission process. When you visit the MCPS Connect homepage, you can search for specific topics like spelling bee or social media, and it will show you which memo included that information. Each topic also lists the intended audience and a clear call to action, so staff can quickly see whether the information applies to them. And in addition, MCPS Connect is published weekly as both a Word document and a PDF, making it easy to print or share individual pages, depending on who needs the information. This combination of searchability and clarity has been a major improvement in overall use. In its first 90 days, the MCPS Connect homepage received 1,828-page views. The data on weekly readership is slightly skewed because I attached the Word document to each email for convenience. The feedback we've received has been positive, especially regarding accessibility and user-friendliness. To keep communication open, we have a feedback form on the homepage for any questions, comments, or concerns. We've seen how much people respond when we share authentic moments from our campuses, especially when students and staff take the spotlight. Using fun trending video styles, especially on Instagram, helps us reach younger audiences in a way that feels natural to them. As we continue to grow our presence, it's important for every campus to stay active online, so families can quickly find the updates that matter most.
Thank you, Yamalie. You see why I hired her, right? Moving on to Strategy 5C, that is, to engage families in the community as partners to support student achievement, attendance, and resiliency. And we have refocused our efforts away from family-focused events this year, which was a metric that was measured in the past because we no longer conduct those meetings. Instead, we are creating opportunities that include many of the following. Those include regular student recognitions at school board meetings, superintendent visits to our classrooms, stronger and intentional attendance outreach efforts, particularly to reduce chronic absenteeism, quarterly attendance celebrations that the team covers, and also our schools regularly provide opportunities for family involvement through school advisory councils and PTA and PTO groups. Moving on to Strategy 5D, that challenges us to strengthen internal communications and recognition of employee contributions. Additional methods we use to strengthen these include group texting, especially with crisis situations. And I know that Dr. Brewer and Mr. McFadden regularly text you as well in a group text with information, so hopefully that is helping you feel more informed and more up-to-date in a timely manner. Superintendent visits also are included, and this is when the superintendent surprises employees for jobs well done, especially when those suggestions come from within the community. Those are always fun because those employees truly are totally surprised, sometimes to the point of tears, good tears, though. We also have recognitions of school district employees by media outlets themselves. In the last month or six weeks, I would say that I've had at least three different media entities reach out, wanting to honor our employees or one of our employees for something in particular. So it's nice to see our employees recognized by entities beyond the district because of the impact those employees are having. And of course, school board recognition includes guest speakers and our annual employee longevity recognition. That's where we have a bunch of people, more people than I can photograph on many occasions. And then also, we have our Principal and Assistant Principal of the Year, which just happened last Friday, and we're excited to share that news each year. Or continuing with Strategy 5D, we also use the Events and Happenings calendar to share details on important events, and I've heard many of you say you regularly look at that, as well as our own staff, to stay informed. Our Superintendent Showcase Video Series releases a new episode every other Friday. Over the last year, this series has generated 17,710 views for a total viewing time of 447 hours, with an average viewing time of a minute and 40 seconds. MCPS Highlights is a monthly internal publication emailed to departments, administrators, and others to share additional insight into MCPS, things like recent school accomplishments or work orders cleared, or major technical issues solved, and similar items. The PR team also delivered communications training to principals, assistant principals, and others at our most recent Leadership Summit this summer. This involved training specifically on HIP communications. And I have a $20 bill in my pocket if you can tell me what HIP stands for. It's okay, you don't have to do that. It stands for heartfelt, intentional, and purposeful. And we walked our school administrators through exercises that would help them communicate more clearly and more genuinely with the audiences in their respective communities. It was very well-received as well. We are finally, and I say finally because this has been more than a year in the effort, putting the finishing touches on a new internal communications plan to document and reference our procedures, and that will come to you through the superintendent. We'll be happy to share that with you. And then finally, improving communications is a constant topic of discussion within our executive cabinet and school leadership teams. Communication is something we all can help with, both in terms of receiving and sharing accurate and timely information. And I am 100% confident in this statement. We will never achieve 100% in communication because we can always improve. There's always new channels coming forward. There's always new methods to use and new audiences to reach. So that's the constant challenge, but we keep moving forward, hopefully succeeding in reaching more of those audiences with each of the platforms and channels that we use. So at this time, I'll invite Megan Beckup to share additional information on Strategy
Thank you, Mr. Christian. I'm excited to continue talking about recognition of employees' contributions. Rewarding, recognizing, and celebrating district employees is definitely at the heart of what our Education Foundation does. So I'll start with our Golden Apple Teacher Recognition Program, where we identify school-based nominees for Teacher of the Year and Rookie of the Year. Those candidates then submit teacher portfolios. They are interviewed and then observed in their classrooms, so that a new Golden Apple class can be selected each year. We are currently in the observation stage of this process. I can tell you, observations end tomorrow, which will be very exciting to have that close out before Thanksgiving break. Our committee members have been traveling the counties, getting sneak peeks into the classrooms of incredible teachers across our district. On January 31, we will celebrate all school-based teachers, our district Rookie of the Year, name our district Teacher of the Year, and also hear from all of our new class of Golden Apples at the annual Golden Apple Gala to be hosted at the Riley Arts Center. And then our Goldens get to work. They become a part of the Golden Apple Academy, contributing all year long to support their fellow teachers and our district as a whole. They host breakfast with the superintendent of schools. They assist with our annual Tools for Teaching supply drive called Pop and Drop, where we provide 1,000 teachers with school supplies to start the year off. Every Tuesday and Thursday at the Education Foundation, you can find Golden Apple Academy members serving, helping our teachers shop at Tools for Teaching. You will also see them serving on district committees, even our Strategic Planning Committee. We continued into year two of the Academy's Teacher Development Day, called Apple, Paper, Scissors, a local Marion County version we established last year as our style of an ed camp, hosted by teachers for teachers. It was held on September 20 at the College of Central Florida. And then, of course, through our academy and our foundation, we continued year two into our partnership with HCA Florida for their Thank a Teacher program to recognize our wonderful teachers through community-wide nominations, where we celebrate and surprise a new teacher every single month, and recognize our teachers as well during Teacher Appreciation Week. Next, I will talk about our school-related Employee of the Year program. Through nominations, our non-instructional employees are recognized for the services that they provide to make school possible. Each year, we select one district nominee to be named our school-related Employee of the Year. Pictured here is Ms. Francesca Jimenez from Liberty Middle School. She was the 2025 School Related Employee of the Year. Nominations are currently under review by the selections committee and will be announced soon. You may have seen last week via social media, we were out on the trail surprising our new Teacher-to-be recipients. The Teacher-to-be Scholarship Program that the Foundation hosts is investing in Marion County Public School employees who are choosing to continue their education, to achieve their bachelor's in education, and commit to becoming full-time classroom teachers, staying in our district. The scholarship can provide up to $2,500 per candidate selected into the program. We are truly helping grow our own through Teacher-to-be and are proud to have just accepted six more of our district team members last week. And a special thanks goes to Altrusa Organization for their donation recently to support these scholarships. Both our 2025 Rookie Teacher of the Year and our 2024 Rookie Teacher of the Year, both were graduates from our Teacher-to-be Scholarship Program. We know investing in our own makes a huge impact. And then, of course, the Foundation wants to continue recognizing employee contributions when they are ending their career in our district and entering into retirement, and so we celebrate retirees with an annual breakfast celebration. During that gathering, it's a great time to remind them that once a part of Marion County Public Schools' family, always a part of Marion County Public Schools' family, and we hope that after some much-deserved rest, time off, and traveling, they consider coming back in their new capacity as a volunteer. Our Foundation was also proud to support Principal Appreciation Month recently. Thanks to a new partnership with HDG Legacy, we hosted lunch for our principals who work tirelessly to support our schools and ensure our students are safe. And now, Mr. Christian will be sharing awards and honors.
Thank you, Megan. One channel that I just realized is not included in this update, overhead street banners. We utilize 12 street banners. We submit applications a full year in advance to the city of Ocala and to Marion County, and we are fortunate enough, occasionally we get those preferred dates and locations. I know American Education Week, that banner is hanging over Southeast 25th Avenue. I saw it this morning, so it's there for this week. But that's another opportunity for us to share simple messaging with thousands of people who drive those roads every day. So one other thing that I included this year that we have not done in the past is kudos to the team and some of the awards that they have made possible, that you may or may not know about, are INSPIRA Awards. INSPIRA is the National School Public Relations Association. We've been a member of that for longer than I've been with the district. So this year, I'm proud to say that we won a Golden Achievement Award. That is the second-highest award that that organization gives. And Dr. Campbell, it's similar to an Image Award, and to get anything at that level, you know, is very, very difficult. We also received two Awards of Excellence, two Awards of Merit, and three honorable mentions for our writing and video work, so kudos to the team for making that possible. At the state level, SUNSPRA is the Sunshine State School Public Relations Association. It is the state equivalent of INSPIRA, where we have about 40 to 45 It is the state equivalent of INSPIRA, where we have about forty to forty-five school districts represented. And this year, we captured the highest award possible, which is the Supernova Award. There were only three of those handed out, so we're happy to have one right here in Marion County. We also captured a Radiant Award, a Silver Award, a Bronze Award, and the Lighthouse Award for Mentorship. And icing on the cake, I'm going to have Ms. Magamol come back up and talk about the accolades and honors that the foundation has received this year.
Thank you, Mr. Christian. Just a moment to highlight a few of the special recognitions from the foundation. I'll start with our Take Stock in Children program. They have received the Luminary Award for lighting the way across Florida, and that is being a model program for serving and supporting at-risk low-income students. We also received the Gold Level Program Management Award, that is for exceeding all expectations in key performance indicators for our internal balance scorecard, which guides all of our program metrics and accountability. Our very own Take Stock Alumni, Marissa Brown, was named the state of Florida's Take Stock Alumni of the Year. And one of our graduates of the class of twenty-twenty-five Take Stock in Children students received the prestigious Leaders for Life Award. Only seven students statewide annually are selected, and Mercinda Cabrera was one of our very own selected as a Leaders for Life. And last, I will share, I was proud to receive the inaugural Unbridled Spirit Award from the Consortium of Florida Education Foundations. This award was named after the late Susan Copeland. She was the executive director of Polk Education Foundation, known for demonstrating courage, compassion, and an unwavering commitment to others. I was humbled to receive the award. I can say that our team at the Public Education Foundation, that includes our staff, that includes our Board of Directors of thirty, that includes the two hundred and fifty-six volunteers who make our work possible, it includes our Golden Apple Academy members. We are blessed to serve our schools. We are all joyfully committed to serving public education. It is one team, one mission to support Marion County Public Schools. Thank you.
And with that one-team-one-mission mindset, we'll turn it back over to the deputy superintendent.
Thank you, Kevin. Board, I just want to publicly thank Kevin Christian and his public relations team. They work tirelessly to make sure that we are enhancing the communication efforts that we have, both internally and externally, and make sure that we're telling our own story as a school district about all the great things that take place daily in the school district, because that's important for us, that we don't let others dictate our story. We sell our own story, and they do a great job of that. Yamalie's been a breath of fresh air in infusing some youthful energy into that team and making sure that we are reaching our younger generations and the ways that they communicate, and we're certainly grateful for her. And I cannot say enough good things about Megan Magamol and the Public Education Foundation. They engage with us in so many ways to support students and staff alike, and anything that we need, that we ask her, she steps up to, and she does not shy away from any challenge, and we're certainly appreciative of their work. I think Dr. Brewer shared when she came in as interim superintendent that she wanted to take on communication squarely and make sure that we are improving the work that we're doing as a school district in communication, not only in what we communicate and how we communicate, but also strengthening the collaborative conversations that we're having, both internally and externally, and making sure that we bring all people to the table that can help us solve the challenges that we face in public education every day. And I think you're seeing the results, the fruits of that labor here before you today with this presentation, and the continued work that we're doing to build that across the school district, as we are all on one team, and we're all on one mission to support helping every student in this district succeed, and that's where we have to stay squarely focused. So we'll continue pushing that direction, and we certainly open this up for conversation.
Thank you, Mr. Whitehouse. I have some comments, but I will wait, and I want to hear what the board has to say. So who, does anyone have comments? Who would like to go first? Don't all jump out at once.
I'll jump in. I just have a lot of gratitude. When I joined the board, coming from the teacher seat, I felt like there was a gap. There's so many great things happening, and it's hard for the rest of the community to hear that, because normally, other media outlets only pick up the negative. So you're only hearing the negative, and I just want to thank you. I know it's a huge amount of effort and time that you put into getting those positive stories that we're seeing more and more each and every day. So just want to thank you for your work. I do, Kevin, I have a question, though. We were discussing, right before the meeting, some tragic things that have happened within the district as this school year. And so getting that message to everyone, and when you mentioned, you know, how to reach the people we need to reach, our street banner. I wonder if we can do something with walker safety and bus safety. Sometime, I just feel like that would be a great opportunity to reach a large crowd that may not be getting the message, because I know you're working on that, and you've put out messages. But just trying to think of, and actually, I should just ask you what our next step would be in communicating safety to the students that need it the most.
We have had conversation with the video production team about putting together student-focused videos. Obviously, community drivers need to be targeted as well, but really, students, getting them to understand the importance of being aware of their surroundings, even though they may be wearing headphones or not walking on the right side of the street or whatever the case may be, actually helping those students, first and foremost, to encourage their own safety, in addition to driver safety in conjunction with our law enforcement agencies. We can certainly do the street banner absolutely. The only caveat there is we typically have to submit those a year in advance because there's a lot of competition. But the county and city are both great in terms of if they have a week where there's not a banner that's hanging, they may open that up for us, so that may be an opportunity for us. We're also looking at the idea of leasing some traffic safety videos, because those are available now versus having to produce them and then distribute them. If we can find something that's appropriate and pertinent to our community, we'll certainly look at that as well.
Okay, which leads me to another question, because I don't know the answer to this. With all of our social media outlets, do we share that? Like, at the school-based level, do our teachers share that? You know, there's information online with Marion County Public Schools. I know we are asking for students to have their phones put away, but we also want them to be informed. So if we're pushing out information through our, say, our Facebook page, do we invite students to participate?
So we did put the QR code on MCPS Connect, and hopefully, I will send an email also directly to principals to hopefully print that out, have that displayed at each school so that we can put the word out. It not only shows our homepage, but all of our platforms.
Okay, that sounds great. I know some of that, they may not be interested in what we're sharing, but if we're going to use it as an outlet to share especially safety concerns, it's our fastest way to connect with our staff and our students. And it's been important to me, because when I go to each individual school, like, say, Facebook page, there's so much interaction that goes on on some of those pages. They've really developed the relationship well with their families, mostly families, but it's just a great tool that I think is easy for us to use. So thank you. Let me check real quick before I hand it off to anybody else. Kevin, I want to thank you again for the Fast Facts. I think it's not just, it's such a great tool for our staff. They may not have time to watch a four or a six-hour video, but sending that out, they can get the fast, quick review, you know, of what decisions were made and how they impacted us. So thank you for taking time to do that. Again, I just want to reiterate the portion of us telling our own story. Mr. Whitehouse explained it perfectly, but I just also feel that's just so very important. Public education is facing a lot of challenges right now, and if we don't share all the good work that's going on every single day in our schools, people in the community don't know. So thank you for the work that you do. I sure do appreciate you.
Sure. Great presentation this morning. Kevin, I want you to go back to Slide eleven, if you can. There was a unique fact that you gave on Slide eleven concerning media releases. Could you repeat that fact again?
Give me just a moment.
The earned media.
It was earned.
The earned media, yeah. It's a component that I've not included before. For no reason. It's just this year, I thought it would be interesting to look at the investment that we make as a community, as taxpayers, in the Public Relations Department, meaning the salaries of the employees involved and the budget of that department. Our sixty-one media releases helped generate, and I say helped generate because sometimes we are generating those news leads, other times we're responding to those news leads. But both of those combined resulted in two thousand one hundred and sixty-nine media mentions that I've been able to document. That's in addition to three point seven million impressions on social media. So the return on investment of three, three point four or five million dollars is the value of the earned media. Three point four or five million in earned media, meaning we earned that coverage, we didn't pay for that coverage. The return on investment is eight hundred and sixty percent.
That was the number that, that was the fact that I think that we need to highlight.
That is, there's nothing scientific about that, okay? I want to make sure everybody understands, that's just Kevin taking some raw numbers. That's just the salaries of the employees of the Public Relations Department added to the Public Relations budget and then divided into that three point four or five million. So the return on investment is just for the earned media coverage. It's not for everything else that's included in this report, but that area alone.
Well, I said that because we talk all the time about how we never tell our own story. We let someone else write our narrative. So I was glad to hear that you wrote that one, that you pulled that out, because it needs to be extrapolated, and we need to hear that. Folks need to hear those things. The other thing that, on that slide, that I notated particularly is one that I've been kind of, I've always harped on, I've never kind of said it out in this format, but I've said it to schools, is the underutilization of the school marquees. People, every school I drive by, I look at the marquee. Churches, wherever, wherever there's a marquee, I'm reading it, because to me, that is a huge form of information, a huge way of getting it out there. And I always felt that we have feeder schools, and our feeder schools should be celebrating what's happening at their schools and all the schools that's connected. And oftentimes, I've said that we don't utilize that. So thank you for saying that publicly, and I hope everybody else is hearing that, too, that we need to utilize those marquees a lot more, a whole lot more. If there's an engagement, we don't think we're doing any more of those. We were doing family engagements at, if it was going to be at Howard, Oak Crest, and all the schools, Madison Street, all of them should have been having the same thing on their marquee to push those events, and we need to still do those types of things. So thank you for saying that. We are not utilizing those marquees, because some of us old folks still read, read the marquee while we're driving.
All the goal board, isn't it?
Thanks, Kevin. A great, great presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you, Reverend Cummings. Dr. Campbell?
Thank you. Yes, thank you to the team. Some of the concerns from last year's presentation have certainly been addressed, and that's obvious, so thank you. There are just a couple of things that I wrote down specifically, based on some other things that have also been discussed as well. Grateful that you did bring up the earned media impressions. As you know, that's something that some of our dear friends have always capitalized on in the public sector, or private sector, and how important their roles are and how important PR roles are, because that earned media matters a lot, and those are dollars we're not spending, for sure. Just a couple of thoughts that I had. I know that we haven't been using Twitter and X very much. It's similar to what we're doing with Instagram in more student-focused, because that's where students are. Students are not on Facebook, so we don't do anything on Facebook that's student-focused. Yamalie, obviously, is going to know this very well. I would request potentially that as we're doing things on X, the people who are there are our state leaders, state legislators, and DOE. So as we have specific messages that are going to be more targeted into that governmental sector, that's where they are. And so those are the people we need to be following, and those are the people we need to be targeting with that particular platform. It's not, it's not an echo chamber within Marion County necessarily. It's never taken off in Marion County. I've said that to people for years. It's just never been a place, so that was so ironic whenever it was required that y'all had to do that. I'm so sorry. Not trying to give you PTSD, Kevin, from back in the day, but X really just hasn't ever caught on in Marion County for whatever the reason. However, again, state elected leaders are there, and DOE is there, and so that's where they're really sharing stuff. So just thinking from a focus and target audience perspective on how you use a channel specifically for a target audience. I also wrote down potentially targeted ads, and I understand we're not spending much money out of PR, but whenever we're talking specific messaging to Vice Chair Conrad's point, specific messaging to students, if we have that engaged, whatever it is, if we need them to know, they got to be walking on the right side of the road, and they got to be paying attention when they're driving, whatever that turns out to look like. Targeted ads on Instagram will get it in their feed, and maybe there's even some contest we do next year or something, or even at the semester break, to encourage students to start following us on Instagram. I told you, I ask my own kids, like, they need to be following stuff. Traditional media, they need to be following so they can actually pay attention to what's going on. So maybe just targeted ads wouldn't cost a ton of money, depending on specifically what it is, just thinking out loud on that. And then the last thing I wanted to mention was specific to Fast Facts, because I, too, am grateful for what that has been looking like and how you guys have done that. And this would just be an encouragement from how we present that on the website. So obviously, whenever, well, I have two more things, but whenever we send out the email, thank you that you sent out the email to everyone so they can click on the link. I think that'll be a metric that we use in the upcoming strategic plan, how many views we have on the website, the webpage, now that it's a page instead of a PDF and all of that. But when you get to the webpage, and I have it pulled up right now, all of the current ones, all the webpage-generated ones are all in a column down the left-hand side, and all of the PDF ones are all, like, first view. So I don't know if there's a way we can change that so that we have, like, at the top is going to be where you start with the newer ones, rather than having the first thing you see, the searchable, because all I see is the PDF from twenty-twenty-three and then PDFs from twenty-twenty-two, and I know that's not what we're doing. We're very current. It's just everything left-generated, and so if there's a way we can update how that is on the webpage.
Yeah, I'll talk with the tech team to make the default, when you get to that page, the current issue shows.
Right.
I'm hopeful that can happen.
Perfect. So I mean, something like that that will make it, because right now, I mean, I know we're current, but right now, it doesn't look current, and so just the way we can make that play out. And the last thing I wanted to mention is kind of just a thought as we consider strategic plan moving forward and how we want to do this, and depending on if we put communication at the foundation or not, because that obviously has been my recommendation. If we do have a strategy, like Strategy 5B, like we currently have, potentially how we have that worded as strengthening two-way district communication, what does that really look like? And I think if we're defining two-way communication, obviously internally, I do think we've done a lot better. On that internal two-way, we are getting dialogue back from our employees, we're hearing what they're feeling, and when we send out surveys, we're getting two-way communication from families. I mean, I don't know how much, I know we have engagements listed on social media, and I just think I want us to think about how we want that two-way engagement, as opposed to really, we're pushing the content out, and we're not getting a ton of feedback, other than views, impressions, that kind of thing. Like, are we asking them to comment back? And maybe we are, maybe, and I know Yamalie has a few of those that we've done, and maybe we've been more successful with that than I realize.
And what happens, it depends on the video or whatever is posted. Sometimes we'll have a lot of people comment, but we've also seen an increase on direct messages. So that's always open, and so, you know, we have a pretty good response rate for our direct messages. There is, whenever we post, a Send Message Now button that you could add to posts. So that could be a practice that we continue doing, but otherwise, it's all open. And we don't delete comments either unless they obviously don't, they need to be deleted.
Yeah, which, thank you, because that, thank you for saying that, because that's a huge PR thing that, please don't ever delete the comment unless it's, you know, profane or something that's derogatory, like, names a child, like, those kinds of things. But regardless, thank you for saying that, because that's definitely what we need to be doing. And perhaps, again, a metric might be in the future, again, I'm thinking next steps on strategic plan for communication, but maybe it is actually tracking how many direct messages you're receiving, because that's not a statistic we heard today. It's probably listed somehow in your engagement category, but it might not be, because, again, that is two-way communication. That's not necessarily liking or sharing or something like that. That's an engagement, but it's not two-way. So anyway, I just, if we move with a strategy- So anyway, I just, if we move with a, a strategy that specifically says two-way district communication and strengthening that, what are those real metrics where we're seeing the feedback directly? And then how are we responding back and forth? Because that's the real two-way dialogue more so than just communication, I guess is how I would say that. But that's just kind of looking forward and, and how we might potentially be able to measure that in the future if that becomes that strategy again. Those are all my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Campbell. Board Member Thoreau?
Thank you. As I've been listening and reflecting on the comments and so far and as well as the presentation, a couple of things popped into my mind and, and the first one is, is that I'm entirely convinced that our accelerating success is largely due to the evolution of this spectacular community outreach and communication that has been demonstrated by the three of you standing up here. It is so much better than it was in the distant past, in the recent past, just witnessing it all coming together and it's so gratifying to see. And it's a tribute to the hard work that all of you put in every day and, and your commitment to the success of this district. We are very fortunate too as a board. Some of us were on the board at the time when we really didn't have a strategic plan. And so it kind of starts there because it gives us that roadmap of what we need to be working towards and our goals. And so I'm thankful to our previous leadership for prioritizing that and actually, you know, so a lot of times consultants get a bad name, but I think we had a good one that helped us develop the strategic plan that will end up getting revised in the not-too-distant future, you know, as we continue to accelerate forward. I also very much in agreement that increasing student engagement is, is what it's all about. You know, they are our end users and I was reminded of that recently at Vanguard SAC meeting, there were quite a few students that attended. And it was just, it was kind of amusing and also just interesting in the way things are today, that the attention span is so short that they don't call it Instagram, they call it Insta. So we literally have a very short amount of time to grab students' attention. But they were very straightforward in saying, if, if you really want to reach us, you need to do it via Insta. So for the increasing sadly number of traffic accidents we're experiencing with our students, also for very positive things like promoting attendance, quick snippet videos, things like that on those two topics, hopefully we'll see a lot of engagement from students on that. And so I think that there's a, that's an opportunity there to have even more reach. I love the idea about trying to increase the two-way communication, you know, maybe something similar, you know, we want your feedback. I mean, we're getting feedback, which is good, but you know, some sort of statement that we really do want it and it means a lot, we read it, that's already too long in Insta world, but you know what I'm trying to say. My only walkaway question is, is that it caught my attention, two hundred and thirty requests for public records over twelve months. I'd just like a little more data on that to all of the board members when you get a chance. How many of those were single requests? How many were done by multiple requests, by a single request? Or I, I would like to just get a better idea of, of where those requests are coming from and, and what the concerns are. I mean, obviously if someone's making a public record request, they want to know something.
I can offer some insight into that. Most of those are individuals or individual companies. Many times the corporate world, when they do not receive or they don't win the bid or they weren't the top finisher in the RFP process, they request all of those files and records to see what their competition did that they need to do to win the bid. So not all of them are that. We do have others that are individual based that for whatever reason are seeking email messages between this person and this person or some kind of financial record of the district. We've had a significant number of requests for either instructional materials or student reading materials that have been removed from school libraries or removed from the bookshelf. Fortunately for us, we put all of that on our website already, so it's all there and they're really, we don't really receive a lot of complaints about that. But that's the nature of many of the requests. We have a handful of individuals who make repeated requests and that's fine. We just process each request on its own merit and we process them all according to what's being asked for. Most of the time there is a record that meets the request. Some of the time there is no record that meets that request. So if you'd like more, I can dive deeper and pull some data, but that, that's kind of from the twenty thousand foot viewpoint.
And, and thank you for that information. It's as often as we can, if we can have the information already be out there so that a request doesn't need to be made because it's readily available. I, I do understand that it, it can be really time consuming to comb through everything you need to comb through to get that information, so.
I will add to that, Mrs. Thrower, that most of the requests for records are truly public record and most of those are already on board docs. But people simply do not want to navigate board docs or find it too complex or not speedy enough to find the records that they want.
And that is an area of opportunity for us. Okay, great. Thank you so much. Thank you for everything that, that you do. Talk about, you know, value added and return on investment. I, I honestly cannot imagine not having a public education foundation, especially one that is such a tremendous partner and, and is so responsive and also proactive and so visible and just functions at such a high level of urgency and professionalism. And the same with your department as well, you know, Kevin. It's just all part of the evolution of professionalizing our practices and service delivery. So thank you.
Uh, Board Member Conrad has something?
I had one other thing I wanted to say. Megan, I wanted to also thank you for the work that you do. When I, when I think about the Public Ed Foundation, in my mind it goes in the same pot com as, as referendum. I think about what would Marion County look like without the support of the Public Ed Foundation? And it would look very different and not in a good way. I know that you and your team work tirelessly, tirelessly, and we very much appreciate the support that you give to our students, our staff and their families. And so I'm just really grateful for the work that you all do. When I go to the foundation, I, I call it my happy place. It's a space that you can step into as a staff member or as a board member and you're just greeted with a smile and a welcome and how can I help you? And sometimes it's just, I just need to visit for a minute or, you know, help answer a question. So just really grateful for you and your team and the work that you do. Thank you so much.
Thank you. So I did write down a few things and I will try to not reiterate things that have already been mentioned. I'll start with Yamal Lee. What an addition you have been to the team. A year ago when we had this conversation, I guess it was in January, but we really dug into our social media and our internal communication. I feel like those were two big of the heavy hitters that we've discussed on. And you came onto the team right around then or a little before, right? And so the, I mean, I got the six-seven joke. I'm, I think Dr. Campbell got it as well. I'm not sure anyone else got it up here, but that's okay. My husband threatened burpees if six-seven gets mentioned in my house. So that's how over six-seven.
Ooh, I need to do that in my house.
Burpees is the new punishment at my house. It's been working, it's been working well. So, um, but there has been such a tremendous improvement on Facebook specifically, which we are not reaching our students there as well, but we are reaching the adults. And the adults are the ones that are voting. They are the ones that are most active and participatory in our day-to-day operations. And for elementary age students, they're the ones that are making sure that they're getting to school safely and that they're attending school and et cetera. So I wanted to give you those kudos. I wanted to say one of the things that wasn't included as a social platform, but I feel like is, is Class Dojo. While it's an internal social platform for a school and not external, depending on the principal, which I've had quite a unique experience going from one principal to a new principal over the last year. The previous principal at my child's school was not very active on Class Dojo and the current principal is incredibly active on Class Dojo. And so to highlight her success, I would just like to say there is so much opportunity for two-way communication because it does allow for comments and, and that kind of thing. But I, I wondered today as we were having this discussion, have we had principals share content? So for instance, I'm thinking you have a short video you record. Is there a way that it's dispersed to principals that maybe are the end user or expected end user for the content to then share within a Class Dojo? And I know Class Dojo is probably more an elementary concept than a secondary concept, but I'm just thinking like if we made a short safety video, are we then communicating with principals either the link to the Facebook video and/or the direct video so they can share it on Class Dojo?
The district does not contract with Class Dojo. We do not have a legal agreement with them. We do not have a data share agreement with them as a district. We do not participate as a district overall in Class Dojo. Individual schools and individual classrooms choose to do so at their own risk.
Absolutely. So what I'm just asking is for the schools that choose to participate, for instance, my child's school is very, they, they, prior to even this principal, the, each individual teachers were doing a very good job of using it as a communication tool. Are we providing principals with videos that we find appropriate so that if they so chose, they could submit it and show it on Class Dojo?
We provide videos that we produce that we believe are appropriate. Beyond what we produce, we don't recommend because typically those are licensed.
Yes, absolutely. That's exactly what we're talking about.
Is that what you're talking about?
So like if we made a video about how to walk to school safely as an example, are we making sure that principals who use Dojo have access to the Facebook link, et cetera, or are encouraged to then share that video or the link on Dojo so that more eyes are getting on it?
We can certainly share those links directly either via email or via MCPS Connect so that it gets into their hands.
Connect would be perfect, I think. That would just be a great way of like a week and a glance of videos that may be appropriate for schools and just encourage principals to potentially reference those in Dojo because some principals are doing a really great job at it. I also wanted to know about billboards. There are, do we have any relationships with some billboards to get some billboard spotlights pro bono potentially to discuss pedestrian safety specifically?
Well, pro bono is the key word there. With our, our traffic safety incidents lately, we may be able to do that. We are prohibited by state statute. Mr. Rios, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I've always been told by the former CFO that we are not allowed to spend budget dollars on advertising. That includes billboards. So pro bono, absolutely.
Yes, so I'm thinking about PSA, uh, PSA campaign. So, and I've had some conversations with city and county officials about potentially having just discourse in our, our joint workshop that's coming up about pedestrian safety. It's really impacting all of us.
Agreed.
It's city and county accidents that are impacting not just our pedestrians to and from school, but also pedestrians within, you know, outside of the scope of what we do. But I would love to see if there was, I know that for instance, the most recent Look Up Marion campaign, they were able to get some of the counties' space for the rubbish campaign. And so I don't know if there's some opportunities to have discourse about a partnership there so we could kind of do a combined campaign for pedestrian safety.
We do have some contacts with local billboard companies, so we can reach out to them.
Okay, thank you. I have a quick question regarding video submittals. So we have amazing things happening on all of our campuses. Is there a procedure for someone, every campus has millennial educators on it, right? And so there are educators who are a little bit more confident and comfortable capturing short-form videos than some of the more senior educators. Not to say that senior educators are not also comfortable with it, but it's generally landing in that, that millennial age range. And so is there a format in which, let's say I was on Bellevue High School's campus and there was something really fun happening, I, I collect a short-form video, is there a submittal process for me to submit it for our staff to use it for Instagram?
We communicate through the principals on a regular basis that we welcome content created at the school level. So our hope is that that information is being shared with the staff. If it's not, we can certainly look at putting that into MCBS Connect as well.
But how is that, how, how is that? I'm not talking about what their, what their television program.
Understand, yeah.
I'm talking about super short form. I honestly, the videos that do best on social media are the most raw, the most real, the most authentic. The more curated, sometimes fall a little flat because they feel less than authentic. And so is there a format, what does that format look like for video submittal to social media?
Well, I'm going to cross the legal line here, Dr. James, because I am not comfortable asking our staff members to use their own personal cell phones to record students because they do not have that permission to do so through our code of student conduct. We as a school district, on district-issued devices have that permission, but beyond that, I, I, and, and I can't imagine that a millennial classroom teacher would have a district-issued phone.
Right.
They may have an iPad that could be utilized. So if that is the case, if they use that kind of device to capture it, absolutely we would welcome it. We can increase that communication through those principals and assistant principals to welcome those videos and we would love to use them especially on Instagram because I think that is the exact audience that you're talking about and short-form video.
Right. And so I hear you. And so I, what I hear is how can we start working through some of those barriers? So if it's a district-issued device that the video needs to be recorded on, then what district-issued devices do we have on our campuses and what does that look like? And just kind of looking through some of those barriers. I'll pause because I think Dr. Campbell has a question.
I do. Just based on some conversations that I've been hearing at the conference I was just attending and the phone-free atmosphere that we have, my most significant concern about anyone doing any of that, that's not there with the sole intent to be media or PR or what have you, if it's a school-based leader, students are going to model the behavior they're seeing. And so a lot of what we heard was, yes, schools have gone phone-free, but, and this is a national thing, so I'm not calling out Marion County Public Schools, but nationally, a lot of schools have gone phone-free, but teachers are still using their phones while they're even in front of students or whatever. And just, this is the conversation again. And so my concern is whether it be the principal or whomever, unless it's designated that the students understand what's happening at the very time that it's happening, that they have permission to do this and whatever, I, I just, we need to be more phone-free on campuses than we currently even are. And the more we can do that, the more we engage with everyone. So I appreciate the interest in, in having that done. I just have the concerns with the double messaging of either we're phone-free or we're not. And that's, that's my concern. Now certainly, I get the, the power of a phone video, but maybe they have a specific badge if they're doing it for the purpose of what we're talking about today. And if you're wearing a green badge, then you get to have your phone out today. I mean, there has to be something like that that we could do. And the other thing that I want to talk on real quick was about billboards. So it's interesting that you said the county's billboards for the rubbish campaign because those were paid for. So I'm really interested in knowing, and that would be a Mr. Welsh question, I guess, but to find out how the county is paying for things that we're not.
Oh, the sheriff paid for it. It's the sheriff's money.
Okay, but that's still taxpayer money. Every dollar that comes into the government is taxpayer dollars. And so if the whole thing is that we can't use taxpayer dollars for paid media, then we need to find out how people get around that.
Good morning. Yeah, we can look in, we can look into that. I've done a little research. There seems to be some waivers available. Most of the state law prohibiting the use of district funds has to do with advocacy or political issues where we're taking a side one way or the other. So we'll pull the legal language and see what options we have and we'll get back to the board.
Okay, perfect. Because I know that a lot of other districts have promotional materials we've never been able to have and all those tchotchke things to promote us and who we are that we've never been able to have because of our interpretation. So I'm really interested in knowing how we can get around some of that and, and put our best foot forward.
Yeah, certainly. And with the number of accidents that we've had this week, last week, it seems like an unfortunate recurring bad movie. I think it's something that we, we really need to look at.
Absolutely. Thank you. Those are my comments, Sergeant James.
Thank you. So to close out that thought, Yamal Lee, I think of it as like a social media manager on our campuses. So you have someone who is a social media manager for the campus and they are responsible at times for capturing short-form video that they're able to directly submit to you for very, very time-relevant posting so that students, when they leave for the day, are able to consume that content as a reflection of their day. So something to explore, just a thought I have. So, oh, oh, Attorney Powers.
Yeah, I just wanted to-
Yeah, I just wanted to point out something that Mr. Christian had touched on, and that is that with, since we do not have a data share agreement with, with certain entities, since we don't have, we don't have the ability to, everything we post, every document, every image, every, every video is a public record. And there is currently no way that those public records, if Class Dojo doesn't have an agreement with the district and it's not tracked, there, there is no way for those images to be utilized as a public record if a public record request were made. We have a requirement to maintain those. And so that is an ongoing issue that I think Mr. Christian's aware of. And it is something that when Class Dojo is being utilized, it's being utilized outside the purview of the school system, but with the, with the authorization essentially of the schools because principals, teachers, students, they're all doing it under our auspices. So that can lead to some interesting questions when we get a public records request or when we get a subpoena for information or any number of things, we've got to take that into account. So maybe that we need to work with some of those platforms like Class Dojo and bring them into compliance and make sure that we, for whatever district, whatever schools are going to be using them, that we have them, that we have them on contract with us. Not that it's a matter of paying money, it may not be, the services we're looking for may be completely free, but the, you know, what they say is that if you're, if you're, if you're not paying anything for it, you are the product. And in fact, in this case, information that is being exchanged on those platforms, that information, unlike our data share agreements prohibit any of that information from being utilized for, you know, nefarious purposes or being sold or anything like that, we can't do that.
Okay. Well, I mean, if this.
For us to look at.
Yeah, if staff needs to dig into, I'm sure Class Dojo is not the only unique.
That's true.
App being used. So if we need to spend some time exploring that a little bit more, then by all means. I wanted to just make mention, I know Mr. Christian and I have talked before, he is the voice of the hold music for Marion County Public Schools. And he does a very good job of timely editing the message. However, we don't always have such a direct connect with the IT changing the messaging. Is that, am I saying that right, Mr. Christian?
I don't want to place blame.
No, well, I will. So what I would just like is the message to be timely adjusted. So if Mr. Whitehouse can work on that, because I have called and been on hold, we're well three, four weeks into the next month and I'm still hearing the message from the previous month. And then I will message Mr. Christian and he will provide very quick receipts of when the messaging was updated on his end, but ultimately it is a multi-step process. So if we can just very timely, because if someone is sitting on hold and they're hearing a message that is outdated, I just think that there's opportunity there for improvement. And it's definitely something that I have discussed probably for like the last two years. So if that's something we could address, that'd be wonderful. I would love to see an internal communication plan when it comes to fruition. We've had some interesting situations recently that schools handle different things differently. And one of the biggest things that I concern myself with regarding that internal communication is a lack of consistency from one school to another. So every unique school is going to have unique environments and parents and students, but there are some consistencies I would love to see between how we communicate things within the school timely and then how we respond to activities as well. So I look forward to receiving that. I want to let the board know, Mr. Christian and I have, Fast Facts came up and we had a little discussion about it. So we will start a video version of Fast Facts starting after the next board meeting. You'll notice some other government agencies in our community have tried to do this in the past. And so there will be a video version of Fast Facts. It'll be an 89-second or less video captured. And as the chair, I will record it ahead of the meeting. Obviously, if things need to change, we will change them. And it will be published after the meeting with Mr. Christian's Fast Facts as a way to provide a video format to Fast Facts that can go on social media, link his website to hopefully drive traffic to the website for his Fast Facts, and then maybe capture audiences who will watch video content but won't read. So I've thought that was something that would be interesting to try, so we're going to give it a shot and see how it goes. The Public Ed Foundation, I just want to make mention, has just done tremendous work. I cannot thank Mackenzie Moment enough for giving us so much support. There is truly, there is no words that can describe how grateful I am as a parent of Marion County Public School students to see the investment that is being made with our students and in all facets, elementary to high school, safety, beyond. And so the Public Ed Foundation, I'm not really sure how you all do it. Because if we were to do a earned, what's the term you used? Earned media. If we were to do an earned value of the work that very few foundation employees are doing for what you all are accomplishing, it is magnificent. And I just want to make sure that you have that praise. It's an honor to be a business partner and it's an honor to be a take-stock mentor. I love my mentee. I don't know what I will do when she graduates, but it's going, I can get a new one and it's going to be just as amazing. So finally, Board, oh, Dr. Campbell?
Oh, if you're, I mean, I just wanted to touch on the video Fast Facts.
Oh, you can go real quick.
Okay. I really appreciate the idea of having a video-engaged Fast Facts. I think that that will be a terrific addition to what we do from a communication standpoint. I would recommend that we actually rotate board members and that we each have an opportunity to do that through the period with, what I don't want us to be accused of as other governmental entities who have done that is using our district resources for political gain. And that actually is what the conversation is in the community. I love the idea. I think it makes us all more engaged with the community for sure. But if there's a way that we could set up a schedule that we would rotate and that each one of us would do a Fast Facts from time to time and do that video, I think that would be a perfect way to continue that engagement.
Okay. Thanks for the recommendation. So finally, Dr. Campbell brought it up and I, well, I think she brought it up. If not, you guys brought it up, but Dr. Campbell and I have talked about it. The CEP partnership was mentioned. I know that there have been a few board members who've made mention of this. The last time we had the discussion as a board member, I believe I mentioned trying to understand their work with our campaign for sales tax and is that something that would have traditionally been done regardless of partnership. We've asked questions about our level of partnership, what are we getting for our partnership, understanding that this is not within the purview of the board, but just questions that the board has asked. And it was mentioned today, so I felt like it was important to at least bring it up again because I understand the renewal is in December, Mr. Whitehouse. So I don't know, I don't know, Board, where, where we go. Dr. Campbell, I don't know where we go from here. I feel like we've asked questions. And I haven't, as a board, I remember I haven't received a whole lot of information back.
I think, my understanding is Mr. Smallridge manages that for the district. So I believe we need to invite him to the table to explain, you know, the cost, what do we, you know, what does that partnership look like? Because I personally, I think there's more for us as board members and as district leaders. Also, Dr. Brewer serves, you know, separately. So I do, I'm interested in further conversation. I, I had, didn't realize we were on such a tight timeline here with the December renewal. So my recommendation would be reaching out to Mr. Smallridge and see if he can join us for a conversation.
Okay. Would it be possible to add our CEP partnership to the December 20th work session? Would that be too late for a renewal? Or I'm sure we could have a conversation with the CEP.
Have the invoice. Hang on one second.
Yes, Dr. Campbell gets the invoices, so.
Because they sent it to me.
Yes.
Apparently, remember? Yes, I think, I think it's a December 31st, but let me see if I can find that.
It would make sense.
Yes.
It does make sense. I just.
Invoice due date, it's actually total due by December 1. I would assume that you are potentially, you know, through December 31st, but it does say that the total is due by December 1. So that's actually the conversation would need to happen today.
Yeah.
And I thought that I asked for that in the last work session, that it actually would be a topic today, but maybe I didn't ask it that way. I thought I asked for November 20th, but nevertheless, it's not an actual agendaized topic.
So if we could potentially engage with Mr. Smallridge and see if he can check on when we can turn in that invoice, I would love for at least the board to have a discussion about it and, and understand better what our partnership is getting us. And maybe even someone from the CEP could join Mr. Smallridge in a presentation. I don't know if that would be appropriate, but all of those, if that could happen for the 20th, that'd be great.
Yes, we'll, we'll work on that. And I would also add that the CEP does have a new leadership at this time that's coming on board. It might be a good opportunity for that new leader to engage with the school board and ways that they envision supporting our local schools and our local school board.
Yes. And I can't stress enough, I, I think that the answer is always no if you don't ask. And maybe the partnership package that we've been paying for has things that we would like to ask for something different and look different because we are a public school entity, which is not the same as a for-profit business. And so I would love for us to engage in discourse about what our partnership could look like that is potentially different than it has looked like. Maybe that, that means our give is still the same to the chamber, but we are asking in return for something a little bit different so that we're able to get the most bang for our buck. So I just think having that discussion at least would be helpful. I see Megan McAmol coming forward.
I came back up. I'd like to just speak to the Public Education Foundation's partnership with the CEP, if I may.
Sure.
Okay. They're a crucial partner in our work. I can tell you just our school business partnership relationships alone, they help advocate annually at the start of every single school year to promote that every school has a dedicated business partner. And I would say, without having the data in front of me, but I could say confidently at least 70% of our school business partners are CEP partners. So they're getting dual recognition because they are members of the CEP. I can speak to the story of public education being told by our CEP partners. And they are able to advocate for us. At times, we've done Tuesday talks to promote mentoring opportunities, to promote CTE opportunities in our schools. Those are all added value through our partnership at the CEP. We have mentor recruitment that's occurred through their, their CEP members. And yesterday, I'm just going to share this, it's kind of a side note, but yesterday, their new CEO came and presented at the CEP breakfast. And at the end of the breakfast, he actually shared with me, he helped start the first education foundation in his previous town where he was at their chamber. And he's a huge supporter of public education. His daughter will be starting at Forest High School. So I do think there is a new leader at the CEP and I'm sure that he and his team would welcome some really robust conversations about how to partner with Marion County's largest employer, which is Marion County Public Schools.
Thank you, Ms. McAmol. And honestly, as a board member, that's what I'm looking for. I'm looking for a conversation about what our partnership looks like and how it is benefiting us in the community. I think that's what we've, I know, I almost speak for Dr. Campbell, but I think that's what we have been asking for. And so I'd love to just get everyone to the table and have a work session about what that partnership looks like and what are the benefits we're getting out of it and how we could improve the partnership to make sure that, again, we're getting the most bang for the buck. Dr. Campbell, did you have anything to add?
I mean, I appreciate that wholeheartedly. I, I think the question just comes down to, does that partnership exist if we're not paying for it? And that's the real big question, honestly, for $10,000, is, is that what we're getting? And I love it. I, I think that the value in the fact that we are educating the workforce is going to be here regardless of whether we're paying for it or not. And so I think that's where the conversation, while we're talking budget, you know, we, we understand, I mean, even Florida School Boards Association, we have members that chose not to be a part this year, so that's professional development that we're not receiving as a whole board because of budget constraints that we've had. This is just another one of those conversations about budget constraints. And do we need to be paying $10,000? Will these partnerships continue to exist if we don't? And that's the biggest question. And I think that's why we need to have it.
So hopefully we can discuss on December 20th and maybe we can engage some of the new CEP partners to come with Mr. Smallridge and have a, have a robust conversation if that works for the board. Any further comment about this item?
Just one thing, I, I just want to add, I do think it is the intent of, with the new CEP leadership because I, I don't remember where it was shared or how it was shared. It might have been before breakfast on Wednesday, I'm not sure. But there, there is an intentional movement to meet with our board. And so I've heard that said out loud. So I'd like the, I'd like the boards to just take a deep breath and remain open-minded as we move into finding out more information. We're, you know, we're moving into a phase with potential new leadership. They have a new leader. So there's just this transition period here. And so I, I'm open to the conversation. I just don't want us to hurry and make a decision before we have all the facts.
Yeah, same.
Absolutely.
Is there any further discussion from the board about item 4.1? Okay. Well, I want to thank the team for coming forward and sharing all about the strategic goal. We are grateful. Mr. Whitehouse, did you have anything you wanted to add?
No, ma'am.
Okay, awesome. Board, if it's okay, we're going to take a five-minute break and we're going to come back. Oh, sorry. Is there any public comment on this item? Hearing none. We will take a five-minute break and come back at 10:48. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair.
Welcome back. At 10:52, we are back to talk about gifted. So, Mr. Whitehouse, if you'll bring us into item 5.1, our gifted program.
Thank you, Chair. So this item has been brought back at the request of the board to reexamine a few of the topics that we shared in a previous work session. So Ms. Donodah, our Director of Mental Health and Wellness, will kick us off. And Ms. Hannah Williams-Jones, our Director of ESE, will also be a part of the presentation.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Whitehouse. Good morning, Chair Dr. James and board members. This morning, we bring you a follow-up to the previous gifted presentation offered at the October 2nd work session. The focus of this presentation is to provide the information that was requested and to review middle school service models and recommendations. I would like to start with a brief review to provide some of the context for the conversation. Gifted is defined as a student who exhibits superior intellectual development and is capable of high performance. The criteria for program eligibility are also well-defined in our Florida Administrative Code. Once a student is identified and found eligible for program services, an educational plan, or EP, is developed. This plan is reviewed at least every three years or at four-year intervals for secondary students. Services are outlined in the EP, and they may include things like consultation, special classes, or pull-out-and-push-in programs. The Florida Plan for Gifted Education outlines seven distinct areas to guide districts in designing their own respective gifted plans. District plans offer assurances that each area is addressed within the plan to include a system for screening and identification, a continuum of service models, development of educational plans, guidance and counseling strategies to support our students, monitoring of student progress, professional development designed to support gifted education, and a system to evaluate gifted services that are provided. At the previous work session, we described the process for gifted screening and identification. Here, we share an overview that was created to help parents understand the referral evaluation process. A hard copy of this was provided for your review. Many parents confuse the screening process with the evaluation process and therefore sometimes believe their child is further along in the process of determining eligibility. This flow chart illustrates the multi-step process for screening, referral, evaluation, and eligibility determination. We begin with the student nomination portion, which is followed by securing permission for screening from the parent. The permission allows the staff or the team for gathering additional information such as hearing and vision screening results and the completion of the intellectual screening instrument. If a student obtains the required score, teachers complete the indicators of giftedness teacher observation form, and parent consent for evaluation is obtained to move on to the formal intellectual testing process. As you can see, the 90-day timeline for completion of the evaluation is initiated at step five, following the submission of the referral packet with the signed consent for evaluation. The referral information, which also includes a statement of need and the gifted characteristics observations from the student's teachers, is reviewed along with the evaluation results at a scheduled meeting for determination of eligibility. Here, we can see the average number of days from the time a student is nominated to the completion of the screening instrument, as well as the number of days, a number of days from the time the student is nominated to the scheduled meeting for eligibility determination. As you can see, we average about 24 days from nomination completion to the screening instrument. Once the screening instrument is completed, the screening score is reviewed for a possible referral for additional testing. The 90-day timeline is then initiated if and when the parent consents for further testing. School psychologists then complete testing within this 90-day timeline, which is followed by a psychological report, which is reviewed at the eligibility meeting. A review of our processes was conducted using a random sample of six elementary schools, which yielded an average of approximately 84 days from the time the student was nominated to the scheduling of the eligibility meeting. This data indicated that we not only meet the 90-day timeline requirement for testing, but have been able to complete the process in its entirety within the timeframe. It is important to note, however, that this is a multi-step process with various decision points and requires participation and collaboration from multiple stakeholders, including the parent, teachers, school counselor, ESE specialist, and school psychologist. Additionally, these averages may also vary depending on the time of year with respective mitigating factors that impact scheduling. To provide additional perspective and information, this pie graph shows the types of evaluations that were completed during the 24-25 school year, which include initial evaluations for determination of ESE eligibility, which have a 60-day timeline for completion, reevaluations, pre-K evaluations, and gifted evaluations. According to this, approximately 26% of completed evaluations were gifted evaluations. In addition to the evaluations and subsequent psychological reports, school psychologists are responsible for participating in problem-solving team and MDT meetings, conducting observations, consulting with teachers and staff, and conducting risk and threat assessments as needed. Based on school assignment and caseload, additional responsibilities may include providing counseling services, supporting intervention implementation, participating in additional school team meetings, et cetera. Additionally, school psychologists support professional learning needs as deemed needed and appropriate. Specific to gifted services, school psychologists and school counselors partnered together to provide information for teachers on the gifted process and how to identify gifted characteristics within a classroom setting. Presentations were conducted during staff meetings and/or grade-level meetings at elementary schools during the 24-25 school year. Currently, we're working on updating the information provided to teachers to include sample student scenarios that would help teachers conceptualize different student profiles and information that may help in improving nominations, especially to include students who may be identified under the underrepresented criteria. Examples of such scenarios were included in a gifted session that we attended while at the Florida Organization of Instructional Leaders Conference or FOIL. During that session, several districts also shared challenges regarding screening and identification of underrepresented students. We discussed the reliability of teacher nominations, given their knowledge of and experience working with these students over time. And many agree that working to cultivate teacher knowledge and skills was a step in the right direction. Additionally, participants shared districts are currently grappling with the sustainability of implementing universal screeners, given current budgetary restrictions and possible uncertainty with future federal funding resources. As such, teacher nomination as a primary means of identification was discussed as a cost-effective practice. Our goal is to continue supporting teachers to improve this practice by increasing efficacy of identification of both gifted and underrepresented gifted learners. And now, I'll pass it on to Ms. Williams-Jones.
Good morning. So in part of our previous conversation, we really discussed what gifted service models could look like and what additional supports could be provided at the secondary level for gifted students. When we look at C-Palms, which is really kind of our state of Florida guidance about standards-based instruction, there are 39 courses listed for gifted coursework, and these are core courses in grades six through eight, which encompass English, math, science, and social studies. There is one course listed as a general elective that requires instruction by a gifted-endorsed teacher. This academic, advanced academics course has 298 standards, so it can be used across content in different content areas to cover a multitude of those supports that gifted students might need. It should be noted that on C-Palms, all courses that meet the goals and objectives determined on the student's EP are suitable, including general education courses. So basically, what they're saying in their guidance from the state level is that depending on the characteristics and profile of the gifted learner, some of those needs may be met through advanced courses or courses with a gifted designation, but other students may have those needs met in a general education classroom that is not necessarily targeted for advanced learners, just depending on the needs of the student. But the goals of the educational plan for that student are going to drive the direction that is recommended for the student to receive educational options. So when we look at a middle school services model, it really can focus on a variety of areas. And so what we're hoping to do in terms of meeting all of the requirements that the state says that we have to provide for gifted learners is giving opportunities for advanced and compact curriculum for deeper exploration, interdisciplinary project-based learning, inquiry and problem-based, problem-based learning to build critical thinking, acceleration and enrichment. Many of our students are taking high school-level courses and middle school, emphasis on creativity, leadership, organization, and self-management skills, and ensuring that the frameworks that we have are aligned with district and state standards and the individualized goals on the student's actual education plan. So in preparing for this session, we wanted to kind of just cast a wide net and see what some of the neighboring districts, what some districts of like size are doing as it relates to gifted supports. And so we reached out to 10 different districts to gather some information. And I have two of them highlighted for you here on the slide. And so in looking at our neighbor Lake County, they only offer gifted services K through 5. In middle school, gifted students have the advanced, the option to take advanced courses or Cambridge courses, but they aren't offering academic courses with a gifted designation in middle school. When we look at Brevard County, they are a little bit different in that their middle schools have advanced academic teams. And so each grade level will have an advanced team. And on that sixth-grade advanced team, there will be courses that are offered with a gifted designation for those students who choose to take that. Coursework, they're offering high school-level coursework. They don't have a gifted elective that they offer. And there are no enrichment opportunities for exclusively gifted students. So what that means is that for them, they are offering those opportunities for high-performing students who may not have been identified as gifted, as well as a gifted, identified gifted student. So it's more of a blended model. And I think that's really similar to what we're doing here with our offering courses with a gifted endorsement through regular content, and so that there may be some high-achieving learners in those courses as well. So in taking the feedback from our previous session, one of the things that we would like to do is add advanced academics as an option on course scheduling to see if there is enough interest to actually add that to some of our middle schools. And so the advanced academics is the elective that the state offers under gifted education. And so it does require that a gifted-endorsed teacher teaches that content. And so we want to see offer that to principals, have them add that as an option for our middle school students this year, and see if that is, some of our schools would be, make that available as a, an elective course for next year. Really looking to add extension activities on curriculum resources to support gifted instruction. So all of our test publishers have extensions of lessons that can be used with gifted learners. And so that is what is talked about when they create our learning calendars. But we want to be more purposeful in having those activities provided, identified as supports for gifted students, so that, yes, our teachers can find it, but we want to present it to them so that they know for this content, for this lesson, these are the things that you can do as a gifted extension. And so we'll be working with curriculum to be purposeful in that. Encouraging more teachers to add gifted endorsement. Right now, through our Marion County Professional Learning, we have gifted self-paced gifted endorsement courses that are continuously available in addition to the courses that are offered through Fidlers. I think part of this process that we don't have information on is, once the series is completed, which teachers are then adding the actual endorsement to their certification because it's an additional process. And so that is the next step of following up with those teachers to see if there is a barrier or a reason why they're then not adding the actual endorsement after they've done all of the work to complete the series. And then also looking to And then also looking to increase professional learning opportunities. So we offer monthly engagement opportunities with our gifted teachers across the levels. We survey them prior to an early release day or a teacher workday for professional learning needs that they might have. And so all professional learning is planned in conjunction with the survey feedback that we get from the teachers. We are often also engaging them as presenters in the professional learning opportunities because some of them are doing some unique things. And we give them that opportunity to share with colleagues some things that may be beneficial for our students across the district. And then if they are asking for a specific content or speaker, then we work to be able to bring those people, whether we're bringing them virtually or face-to-face, to be able to provide additional professional learning opportunities for our, our gifted teachers. Mr. Whitehouse.
Thank you, ma'am. I do want to just thank Ms. Williams Jones and Ms. Del Nodal. They've both been working hard, along with Ms. Weber, our gifted resource teacher that works in the ESE department, to really rethink the way that we're approaching gifted. And we appreciate the work that they've done. They've done a lot of outreach to other school districts to really talk about what they're doing, what's working, what's not working. As we heard from Ms. Del Nodal, this is a state-level topic as well. We saw at the last FOIL meeting that they did have some state-level conversations about gifted supports. And so continue that work that we can really rethink what we're doing with gifted support. I think the biggest thing that we've taken away from this is, you know, not, not knowing for sure what funding looks like in the future. We want to make sure we're investing our dollars in people and not programs. We know that that is the greatest asset that we have, and so we want to make sure we're focusing on developing the people that we have here, encouraging more staff to get gifted endorsement that can be a part of that new solution of how we're supporting our students across the district. And, and just really making sure that we are providing as many opportunities as we can for all of our students, not just our gifted, but really to support all of our students across the district. And I know Dr. Campbell shared before, but we are starting to really just rethink what the middle school look like in general and, and ways that we can better support all of our learners across that transitional period in school for Marion County Public Schools.
Thank you, Mr. Whitehouse, and thank you, team, for willing to come back before us and answer some of our questions and dig a little bit deeper. I know some of us had more questions than others, but I really appreciate you guys taking the time to come forward and dig into this a little bit more, Board. Does anyone want to start with questions about this topic? I have some questions, and I don't mind starting if that would be helpful. Okay.
Go ahead.
So I have a few questions slash comments. We'll start with the advanced academics, which is, I'm assuming, what probably the course code was, or something similar to the middle school elective I took as a student years ago. Have we gone to visit what an advanced academic classroom looks like? I think I have a couple. I'm grateful it's going to be on a course request form. However, if there is a absence of what it is, students and parents may not select it because they don't know what they're selecting. And so how are we communicating, not only to teachers who may be hesitant, there may be some that are really excited about the opportunity to teach a gifted elective, but there may be others that have pause because doing something new can be very challenging. And so have we gone to districts who are doing advanced academics? Do they have a curriculum guide? Do they have a framework that we would be able to duplicate? Have we done any of that?
So we have not had an opportunity to visit any of them. Our outreach with them was particularly email and phone call. But I'm sure that we could set up a visit. I know Seminole in particular has some interesting things that they do around gifted supports at middle school because I was there and previously worked with that team. And so that is absolutely something that we can do so that we can, one, kind of shape what a Marion County version of advanced, this academic class would look like. And then also gather just some data on how many students are, are signing up for it and, and what focus seems to be, because there are two-hundred-and-ninety-eight standards and they're not covering all of those. So which ones seem to be ones that students are more interested? If we can get some data on that, it saves us some of the legwork and trial and error of putting together something that students aren't going to be interested in. So those are follow-up conversations that we're definitely going to have.
And you know, as a, from my seat, I guess what I would say is I would love to see us at least pilot it in a few places next year. So maybe it's not something we do everywhere, but at least in a handful of schools, we're piloting this advanced academics, even if it's one section at, at three schools, just to see what it looks like. And that's the year where we kind of build the plane and we talk, and we try to figure out what the kids enjoy and figure out what they don't enjoy. But I think as a parent, there has got to be a way for us, as those course requests come home with our, with fifth graders and going into sixth grade, and then obviously, once they're on your campus, the communication may be a little easier. Back to our communications conversation. How are we creating some type of communication with parents of gifted learners specifically? But I think also advanced learners, because I would love to see this course be available to advanced learners as well as gifted learners. But how are we communicating to them what this is? Because this would be unique and new for Marion County. So is that a video content of something they're doing in another county like Seminole to communicate with parents? This is what this could look like in Marion County. I just want to see that robust plan developed as we, because we send out course requests in March, right? And so we're just about three months out from that. And so I want, I would love to see a plan developed for that launch prior to then us putting it on paper, because just to put it on paper and say, well, nobody selected it. Well, of course not, they didn't know what it was. So that's just kind of my thought on that. I didn't, Board, I can continue to go, or if you guys have a conversation about that?
I, I have specific questions about that as well, as, as a mom who has filled out that middle school form, which you'll be doing very soon, Dr. James. I, I also had very similar questions to what Dr. James was asking because the elective's form is going to have band and chorus and agriculture and whatever, depending on the, of the middle school that the student has chosen. And while I agree that having pilot programs would be a good idea, honestly, if I, as a middle school parent, knew that there were three schools that were offering something specific for my get, for my gifted learner, I might have actually chosen to have my child go to that school during a school choice window. And so I, that's my only concern about only offering it in a handful of schools because, right, we're, we're kind of behind the eight ball on that particular thing. I know that, that my children, when they went into middle school, we chose our zoned school as opposed to choosing another pre-Cambridge or pre-IB or something like that. But if I had known that a gifted elective might have been an option, then I might have, have chosen that. So that was part of my question, and also because it makes it really complicated if you're just sending the same form home with every student because you're only going to have about four percent of your students that are going to even qualify for that advanced academics class. So how are they necessarily going to know that they couldn't take advanced academics? And so you may have families that are wanting to opt into that. And unless we're also including high achievers in addition to those who are classified as gifted. So I, I appreciate the idea of how that's going to be rolled out. I think it could potentially use a little bit more development on the rollout, just because. And then how many students is it going to take to actually make the course? So is it, if you only have twenty-five students, then you're just not going to do it? Or is it going to take fifty to a hundred students that say they want it, so then you're going to offer it, you know, three or four class periods a day? I, I don't, I, I certainly appreciate that thought. And if you'll allow me, Dr. James, I, I wanted to roll into another, because also going to Seminole and going to Orange or wherever all you want to go to see the, the middle school gifted options and what they're looking like and how other districts are delivering those models in middle school. I also want to say the state of Florida doesn't do this well. I mean, I'm just going to make a blanket statement. We are actively and still holding out hope, it's already in bill drafting, that we will have a bill this year, whether or not it hits committee or not, but we're starting with the language in the House and the Senate to get gifted pulled out of ESE statute and have it at its own separate statute, its own separate everything. So then we really can start talking about these high achievers, and it's not just gifted and, but it's gifted in high achievers as well. And we know that that's not there yet, but we're, we're actively working on that as a board to ensure that that's something that we have for the future of the way the state of Florida looks at these students. Because currently, the state of Florida doesn't really do it as well as I think it could be done. So I also would entertain the idea of not just looking at those surrounding districts and how they're doing it, but actually look at model districts around the nation. How is this being done in ways that can really, really impact these students and these high achievers? And then I have other thoughts, but go ahead, Dr. James.
Sure. So I, to that point, Dr. Campbell, I think one of the things that I think would be most helpful is similar to what we do, our middle schools do, and they send home a, and high schools, they send home letters of choice, so we would love to have your child enrolled. When we do course requests in middle school, so for rising sixth, seventh, and eighth graders, potentially attaching a letter to the course request form for the students who are eligible for advanced academics that describes what advanced academics looks like may be a way to communicate it more effectively. And then having a separate course request form for the students who receive the letter, that may just be a way to clarify that a little bit. But as a parent, you know, if you get home the course request and the kid wants to do band and ag, and then you read a letter, well, I, I'm still probably going to help my sixth grader make decisions, right? They don't just get, they don't have a complete autonomy. And so as a parent, if I think advanced academics is going to be more suitable for them, then we may make that family decision. So that may be a way to.
Because the parent does have to sign the form.
Correct.
I mean, that, that's a requirement, but if the parent doesn't even fully understand that the option is available.
Correct.
This, this conversation needs to happen to parents more than anything.
Yes, absolutely. And so maybe a letter recommendation to a quick video that we could make, maybe from the PR department to have discussion about it or hear our code, to kind of see what it looks like. That may be a way to just get that information in front of parents as they're making that informed decision. I have two questions about the timeline that you guys presented, which I love a good visual. I'm a visual learner myself, and I would love for this to be readily available to our community. One of the things that we discussed regarding step two in the last meeting was changing the letter that goes home. So have any steps been made to make those adjustments? And if you want me to frame a context, I can.
No, I, I remember, not at this time. And it's kind of thinking through some of that because part of the reason we haven't really added that kind of language to the letter is to encourage some of those conversations. It's really different when you have a student that maybe has received the letter that said they're not moving on, and the parent's like, oh, I really thought maybe they could have, or I know when they took that test, it was a bad day, something like that. To bring that information so that we have that conversation and we can talk through the rest of the process, also really talk about what that looks like, we can give them information about when, if they are tested once, when the next time that they can be tested, all of those things we would really want to be able to have as a conversation. So this encourages the parents to come in and have those conversations with us.
Okay. Well, I am going to attest here today that I feel strongly that it needs, the letter needs to change. I'm working through my emails to find the email that I sent to Dr. Curly personally because it had the attachment from my daughter's letter that she received. I feel very adamant that this letter needs to include parents' next steps. Because, and Board, you can weigh in on this if you'd like. But to me, the letter has, it, it, the letter doesn't even have a who to call if you have questions. So the letter concludes with, although your child possesses some characteristics of a gifted learner, he/she does not meet the criteria to continue with a gifted referral due to the results below.
So Chair. I, I, my concern in step two, I thought this is what you were going to address in step two. My, my concern is still making the K-bit the end-all, be-all and having specific cut scores that be the end-all, be-all. That, that's my biggest concern, and so that speaks to how the letter is written as well. Because i- if we allow maybe a window of those students that then get to go to portfolio option, again, I, I believe this isn't just gifted, like this is in, like, whatever. I think it's gifted and high-achieving students because, especially depending on the age of the student being screened, they may or may not have had a good day, they may or may not, you know, could, if we're using the Naglieri versus the K-bit, I mean, they could be a non-verbal student that can be a concert pianist, and we're not actually catering to those specific giftedness characteristics. And so there's, that's, that's my biggest concern about step two, is continuing to consider the K-bit the end-all, be-all. Like, our requirements are more stringent than what the state requires for that K-bit. And so, and they don't even use the K-bit, it's, anyway. So, but I would agree, Dr. James, that how we're verbalizing that, I guess, written, not verbalizing, but written communication with families about that, I, I think can be adapted some and has room for improvement.
Board Member Cummins? You're muted. You're muted.
You're muted.
It was quiet for a long while. Chair, I, I agree with both of those concerns. I have notes on both of those items as I reviewed this PowerPoint. I'm concerned too about the K-bit as the only screener. And I also, I'm not happy with the letter that goes home. I think it leaves the parents feeling that they have no other choice, no other options, and that's not accurate. So I think we have room for improvement in this area right at step two.
And I, to me, even just taking state statute and putting it in layman's terms and saying, per state statute, LMNOP. As a parent, you have the right to request a further evaluation of your child. If you so see fit, please contact the School Guidance Counselor at 1-2-3-4-5-6-7 for further information about your best next steps to advocate for your child. Just leave it at that. And the parents who are invested and with it are going to invest and be with it. But it, to me, to leave it off with no next steps as a parent, unless I knew what I know, I would have no idea what to do next. I would have had no concept of what to do next.
I don't, I think it's more than that. I think it's more than not knowing what to do next. You feel like you don't have a what, what's next.
Well, that's.
I feel like it's, I think you read that letter and you feel like you do not have any choices.
Right.
This, this is the decision, nothing else can be done. And I think that's a dangerous message for us to be sending.
I would agree. And I, I can, I don't have to die on the hill of the cut scores right now because I feel like we have, similar to the legislation that we're putting forward, we're having a multi-year plan for the work we want to do with gifted education at the state level. So same, similar to this, I'm not trying to accomplish everything today, but there are some big things that I think we, I would like to accomplish today. So for me, at least adding language in the letter is one thing that I think we could probably, I mean, I want to hear from Board Member Thrower and Reverend Cummings, but I do think that's something that I would like to see at least addressed so that parents know their rights. Do you, do you, Board Member Cummings or Thrower, do you have anything you'd like to mention on the letter specifically?
Thank you. I, I don't disagree. I think anytime we can continue the connection, you know, with families and, and help guide them along the way is, is a great opportunity. I was, I was looking at slide ten also on service models in, in middle school and framework and subject-based structure and focus areas may include, and, you know, there's six little boxes. And when I think about middle school and I think about, you know, two particularly students that are very close to my heart, the emphasis on creativity and what you just mentioned, Board Member Campbell, about, you know, the concert pianist, it might be non-verbal. Leadership and organization and self-management skills, those all hit me. So as, as we continue to go down this path and looking at pilots and things, I think it's also really important to hear from the middle school principals on, on what they see, you know, in the kids at, at their schools as the, the greatest need where we could have the most emphasis. So those are just a few thoughts I have. Thank you for your work on this so far.
Reverend Cummings, anything?
Thank you, guys, for the presentation. I do think the, the letter should be clear. It should allow those parents the opportunity to know that there are, there are some next steps. I think sometimes our communications, they make sense to us, but they don't make sense to everybody else.
Absolutely.
So we definitely need to clear that up, so.
Thank you. Well, I think we, Mr. Whitehouse, I think we're pretty in consensus about that, if that's something that we could make happen. I, it's not lost on me that the burden of the school psychologists may increase, and that may mean that we need to come back and have a discussion about the units allocated for school psychologists. But I, I think that that's something we need to dig into. As with step two as well, similar to step two, what I will also mention you all is, I had some in-depth emails at the end of October with the team about the Naglieri, the NGAT, right? And so I asked some questions about a universal screener. And so when we do a universal screener in second grade, in theory, every student who's sitting in second grade, the day we do the screener is participating, which would include previously identified gifted learners, right? So for instance, in second grade last year, when my second grader was. Right? So, for instance, in second grade last year, when my second grader was sitting in the classroom, presumably she sat and took the screener. Now, I didn't actually, it just occurred to me to see what she got, but that's for a conversation for another time to really hit home on my data here. I asked some questions and I said, "How many of the previously identified gifted learners took the screener in second grade and would not have moved forward in the process?" Board? Fifty percent of the students who were already evaluated as gifted, who took the screener, would not have moved forward in the process to be evaluated. I, for one, find that incredibly concerning. Because, in the numbers specifically in the email, of 113 students who were identified as gifted and should have taken the NGAT, only 66 had scores for the NGAT. So several students previously identified were not administered and some students only took a portion. So, of the 66 students left who took the screener that were gifted already, 34 obtained a 120 or higher. So 50%, 51.5% of the already identified students who were administered the NGAT scored higher, which means 49% of them, if they had not been previously identified, which was probably on behalf of their parent and/or teacher, would not have moved forward in the process. Which to me creates a very clear discrepancy in access to gifted programming and the inadequacies, I believe, that are in the screener. This data to me is the ultimate serving platter of the failure of the screener. Now, that is my testament. You guys can disagree with me, but the fact that 50% of gifted learners didn't pass the screener to get a gifted evaluated is concerning to me. And so I don't know where we go from here, but I think collectively, we have work in the screener department. Staff, maybe if you guys want to add comment to the, I mean, this was read straight from Ms. Delnado's email, so.
I would. So, and speaking of that particular screener, which is our universal screener, there's a couple of factors that we have to take into account. One of them being, it's digital. You have the student sitting on the computer and they're completing the test on their own. It's not individually administered by an adult, which is the difference between that and a K-bit. Also, again, we talked about the difference with the two screeners, that universal screener being like casting a net and trying to see as many students as we can get that we're looking at possibly being eligible to move forward for evaluation. Whereas the K-bit, we're receiving nominations and then we're looking at a screener who's, that's gonna help us be more predictive of whether, when we move to evaluation, if we think it's likely that they will meet eligibility. And so with our, that was not a great hit rate and we had shared that before. The K-bit has a 45% hit rate as far as screening. And then still, moving after that, we do the full evaluation and we look at the student. So, when we were looking at the NGAT, we currently are not implementing that universal screener this year because of some of this data.
So what are we implementing?
Right now, it's nomination process again. So that's why we gave that flow chart so that you see it. And that's why we're working on even providing that information again to teachers. They have the most time with the student, they have the most familiarity with the student. Usually our nominations are the best way for us to find, not just, just like you mentioned, it's not just looking at their performance in the classroom, but also some of those characteristics. We're making sure that those observations of those characteristics are being filled out not just by the classroom teacher, but also by their specials teachers. So we can get a really good picture of a well-rounded student and all of their characteristics and all of their accomplishments throughout the, you know, in their school career. And there, we get better nominations. Usually with those nominations, we also, especially with these profiles that we want to add to that professional learning, is for them to really see what that student might look like in the classroom. And when we're talking about our ELL students, when we're talking about some of our other students that might not be super high achievers, but they have some qualities that we're hoping those teachers will be able to pick out, and then we'll have even better nominations.
So to confirm, because I don't believe this board has received information before today that the universal screener was no longer happening. Okay.
Did not know that.
Nope, that's news today. So, hot off the press. So we are no longer doing a universal screener, which, to be honest, I don't, I'm not against not paying for something that's not working. So, you know, I don't want to continue to throw money at something that I don't believe is doing the job that we were looking for it to accomplish. I do see value in a universal screener for A-grade. And I want the team, my opinion, Mr. Whitehouse, would be for the team to continue to work forward in trying to figure out a solution for what this looks like, because there are students being missed, most definitely. And how are we, how are we finding them? So, I had one more thing. I, I'm a little confused why step five is step five. Because I believe state law says that after consent is signed, timeline starts. I looked at the Florida Department of Education website to confirm my thought on this and it is validating my thought pattern. So, why are we waiting for a gifted referral packet to be complete by a school counselor for the 90-day timeline to begin?
So it doesn't. That step three and step four usually are happening concurrently. When we're sending home that consent for the parent to sign, they're already collecting all those other components. Once we received the consent signed by the parent, then the school counselor is just uploading all of that information into our portal so that the psychologist has access to it. And from there, they begin their testing process.
So I would make the recommendation that step five needs to move on this to step four or step four and five are the same. But this reads as if until, which, by the way, we have guidance counselors who are taking an exorbitant amount of time to complete the gifted referral packet. At firsthand account, I think probably other board members do, from schools, of the cog in the wheel being the counseling office, for whatever reason. And so, the way this reads as though the timeline does not begin until the referral packet is complete, when actually the timeline begins when consent is signed by the parent, which I know we all know. So, I would be of the opinion that this 90-day timeline falls immediately after step three. I don't think that it's wise to continue it to be after the gifted referral packet because it is, it should not be. And as a parent, I want to make sure our parents understand that that 90-day timeline begins after consent.
I do have a question too. How, and maybe I'm just missed it, I don't know. How are kids who are, where their primary language is not English, how are they assessed?
So it depends. It depends on their level of language proficiency. They can be assessed either in their native language, which I did several times, or they can be assessed with a non-verbal.
With a what?
Non-verbal measure. So it's looking at their skills. But in the way that the test is provided, it limits the amount of language that they would have to use.
Because I've always felt that we miss a lot of kids based on language. You can see certain signs with them, you can see certain traits, but because of that barrier, I think that sometimes we miss some kids. I know we miss some kids. I won't say I think, I know we miss some kids.
And we have a variety of IQ tests that we use. And so, the evaluator is looking at all of that. They look at strengths, they look at limitations, and that's how they select what they believe is gonna be the best measure for that student.
Thank you.
So, Board, I saw Dr. Campbell doing some typing over there about timeline. Did you have any comments on that, Dr. Campbell?
So, I was going back to see when the timeline from step one to step two, because I also have heard some concerns about, and I understand it's 24 days, I saw that in the slide, potentially from when the parent first requests it to when the K-bit is administered. I know we only have a handful of those K-bit kits, so it's not like every school has one. So it's like, if a school counselor happens to have a break in their day that they could call kids and administer the, so I mean, that's not an option right now. And I don't know how expensive those kits are. But that, the process between step one and step two also, the whole process could take the full school year. I mean, yeah, it doesn't look that way on paper, but 90 days in a school calendar is an entire semester. So, I mean, it could really take the whole year. I'm sitting here just listening and processing. I know I've shared my own personal stories multiple times. I had my, I had two of my children screened independently. My third child was recommended in the second week of kindergarten by his teacher. It took the entire, this was several years before either one of you were in your spots, so. But it took the entire year before the student was ever screened. And I got one of those letters that probably hasn't been rewritten in decades or whatever. And I stopped. I stopped the process because I didn't know what my next, so I'm just sitting here honestly, hearing you, I'm getting angry at myself that I just said, "You know what? I'm gonna let the course play out. I'm gonna, I'm not gonna go and pay to have the screening done independently." Did I do my own child a disservice? Potentially. Because I just stopped because of what the letter said. So that's causing me real angst just sitting over here in my own personal mulling over. But I also want to let you know, hot off the presses, I just got an email from Jessica Janice Wood about gifted. Would you like for me to share that with you all? So, the education chair has been speaking with our representative who is interested in filing the language. And the education chair has some budget concerns about the projected downturn that they're experiencing this year and what that might look like. So our representative may be framing a proposal for a pilot program. So, that very well may be how the statute is shifted and it will be a pilot program. Certainly, we would be a part of that pilot. So within the next couple of days, I might need some feedback from you ladies as to what that might actually look like and how we want to pilot this in Marion County since we're leading this charge. And I'll be talking to the representative, potentially even later today, to find out what his ideas are. We know we'll have a senate sponsor on the other side, once we figure out what that looks like. So, we understand that this is going to cause budget issues. We understand that it's going to make the state look differently at some things that need to have dollar signs attached to them. But what would we actually use those dollars for? Is it for stipends or something for gifted endorsed educators? And I think that might be, I know that that would have to be bargained, whatever. But I think that that would be some kind of, some incentive-based something to encourage more gifted endorsed educators. So, just pieces and parts to what that pilot potentially could look like. And without it, we don't need it to carry several million dollars. We need it to carry, like, reasonable dollars for a pilot program, but at least kind of putting some teeth to that. That's literally hot off the presses, email 1133.
Board Member Thrower?
Thank you and thanks for that bulletin. I was hearing about the K-bit kits. And to me, that could be a somewhat low-hanging fruit. There's always this sense of urgency, right? Because there's only 180 days in the school year and it goes by so quickly. So if it's a matter of having additional K-bit kits, then that's something that could certainly be part of pilot funding. Because what we're trying to do, I thought, with the universal screener was capture more students and get the ball rolling. I also had written down the gifted endorsement and how much it costs and opportunities to cover, you know, that professional cost. So those would be two specifics that I would offer up.
Well, and it's free with Fiddler's. The endorsement is free, right?
There's no cost to take the courses, whether they do them online through us or through Fiddler's. However, it is $75 for the educator to add that to their certificate through the Florida Department of Education.
$75 may not sound like much to some, but when it's like $21 to get something from McDonald's anymore, you know, it all adds up.
Well, and typically, when you're adding it in the summer when teachers are not getting paid, you know. So if there's a way we could figure out that, that'd be wonderful too. Did you have anything else, Board Member Thrower?
I do. I just have a couple clarifying questions. So, on the chart on slide six, with the reevaluation piece, which is 402, that means for all, a reevaluation for disability, gifted, or pre-K? Those are a reevaluation for any student?
For ESE categories.
Okay. All right. On slide seven, as you talk about training on identification. So we have some schools, I just wanted to know how you are prioritizing that. So we have some schools that at this point do not have a single gifted student. And so my hope would be, is that school is at the top of your priority list. When we look at, you know, my area is elementary. So as we look at elementary schools and we look at what percentage of students do they meet, is it, Dr. Campbell, 4%? Is 4% of that campus, you know, have a gifted population? And if they don't, I think they should have a star by their name. Like, what can we do to support the teachers and the staff at that school to better identify our gifted students? So I just didn't know if you guys were already doing that?
So part of that work is really going to be helping teachers understand the characteristics of gifted, those classroom teachers. Because, to your point, last year, everyone was screened. And so even those schools that didn't ultimately identify students still had the screener. But the characteristics are part of the eligibility process. And so there were students who sometimes may have had scores that would have lended themselves in that way. But the gifted characteristics identified by the teacher were low. And you have to have a certain preponderance of characteristics across the scale. And often what we see is that for some schools, they don't rate their students as having the gifted characteristics as opposed to what we see at other schools where they identify more. And so that is definitely training to understand that gifted may be the kid in the back who's calling out and interrupting your lesson, not just the kid who's showing up helpful and getting As on everything. So, so those are training conversations that we're looking to have. And so definitely, starting with those schools where the numbers are nonexistent or really low is definitely a way to combat the concern that you have addressed.
I agree. Because that checklist, if I remember correctly, is really a collaboration. There are pieces of that checklist that I wouldn't see as their homeroom teacher. So I would have to go visit with the art teacher or the music teacher or hand that off. So I can't just sit down and say, "Oh, I've never seen this," so the student doesn't qualify. So there really is a collaborative effort that goes into that checklist.
And when we updated the checklist, so the one that we have now that we share, has three different spots for three different teachers to be able to complete. And then we look at it in its entirety. But again, just like Ms. Williams Jones was explaining, we're not just defining what those characteristics are, but giving them information about what does that look like? And it might look very different from one student to another.
Okay. And lastly, well, one, I want to thank you both. I meant to start with that. Thank you both for your work in this area. But I had a question, just kind of open-ended. As you see, at least three board members have been approached about finding some way to improve the gifted process. And so, this research that you've done for our two work sessions, did you identify areas that you feel like, wow, we really do need to work on this? Is there any, you know, self-evaluation on the process that you want to share with us so we know, you know, where we're looking to improve?
I'll say, I think the work that we did last year on that checklist for those characteristics, I'm looking forward to see how that rolls out, like what kind of feedback we get from the teachers for that. Because I feel that was a labor of love. We took a long time really looking at what we wanted to include, how we wanted it to be presented, and how we wanted to kind of roll that out. The other part I'll say is, so the professional learning, we already had those presentations kind of put together and we shared them, we got some feedback. Being able to improve them now with some of these profiles that we got after that session at FOIL, I think is gonna really make that a lot more robust. And I think it's gonna really bring it to life for the teachers, make it something that's a lot more usable for them in their classroom. And as they kind of conceptualize some of these things that can be difficult concepts. So I'm looking forward to their feedback on that.
I'm excited about that too. Because sometimes when information comes from here and by the time it makes to the classroom teacher, it's a sheet of paper with a checklist. Here's your gifted student. Look for these 17 things, you know, when it ends in a pile with the other million things for you to do. So thank you for your work on that. Anything else you'd like to share?
I just think having the clarity and awareness of how long the process feels for a parent has been very helpful, listening to you all articulate that. And so even though we are based on the data in those timelines, because it is two separate processes for screening and then evaluation, from a parent not understanding that, they think the clock starts the first time someone has a conversation with them about making the recommendation. And so I think we can definitely do a better job of the communication that we provide to our parents and also giving them some updates along the way. So as the screening process is completed, we now say, "This is completed, now this is what we're moving into" so that they aren't feeling like they're just waiting forever with no communication. Because I understand how they could definitely see it in that way. And so I think we can take steps to make sure that we are communicating more clearly and at different phases of the process.
Thank you so much for that. And I agree with you, because I think it's, it's difficult on, for the parent. It's also difficult as the teacher, because I have a similar, well, actually, many similar experiences as Dr. Campbell had. And when you send in that referral, the screening starts, and it's, I have parents coming back to me the next school year saying, this is not complete. And so I really am interested to see what Dr. James's recommendation for the timeline, and what our staff is able to do with that. Because I think that will satisfy a lot of our, our staff members and our parents. So thank you for your work on that.
Well, and that's kind of to wrap us up. Dr. Campbell, I don't, if you have something to add on that?
I, I did want to ask just a quick question about that, just from my own personal experience. Are those evaluations being done in the timeline of like, this referral came, so you're next in line? This referral came, so you're next in line? Or are we prioritizing underrepresented groups ahead of when referrals came in? And that's a very important question, because I can assure you, before you ladies were here, it was happening the way I just asked.
So I would say, if you mean just with whatever referrals I've received for gifted testing, they would be done as they were received? Because we're looking at those due dates and when they have to be done. When we're looking at all evaluations we've received, remember those other evaluations have a 60-day timeline. So again, we're really trying to balance what is being done. Even our reevaluations that don't have a timeline should be done in a timely manner.
Sure. So I, I'm just-
At that point, if we know, there has to be conversations about changes in services, we're prioritizing it that way. So we really try to be as responsive to the needs of the student as we can.
Sure. But just personally and anecdotally, I can assure you that based on when my student was originally told that we were gonna have evaluation, and when his student, his evaluation occurred was the, basically by the end of the school year, and many other students were evaluated before him. And so I, that's why I asked the question about underrepresented classes.
Now, the state holds us to the timeline for every child. And so once the consent is signed, that 90-day clock starts ticking. And so they don't make any differentiation at the state level in terms of whether it's an underrepresented student, or a student who would qualify under just the state rule. Everyone lines up by that date, and so that is, no other consideration is given for that.
Thank you. That's helpful.
Yes, and I mean, I have heard of scenarios in the, in the not-so-distant past where private school students have gotten in the hopper and gotten prioritized over our own students here in Marion County Public Schools. So I just think it's gonna be important that as private school requests for evaluation come in, they get to join the hopper and get in line just like everybody else. So to land the plane, I, I love the handout, and I would love if permission to screen includes this. Because to me, a parent getting this with permission to screen would be tremendous. Because then we are clearly identifying to the parent what the expectation is. Now, my request would be that between step one and two, there is a date written above that line. 20 school days, 25 school days. It looks like we were averaging 24, right? 24 school days? So, you know, but somewhere between 20 and 25 school days, if we were able to write that in, so that parents can say, okay, they can look at their calendar and they'll know, you know, I probably shouldn't complain about this until five weeks from now, right? And then from pre-referral process to consent, I would love for the line to say, up to the parent, right? Because the parent has to sign the consent. And sometimes, we all know, the parents take their time signing consent, and then expect immediate move forward. So somewhere on here where it would say, you know, expediency on the parent will yield a faster 90-day start clock, something, that was probably way too wordy, but you know what I mean. Somewhere to identify that the parent holds the keys to that castle between step two and three. And then my request would be that that step five moves up, because I want it to be very crystal clear that as soon as consent is signed, the timeline begins. So parents can then clock those 90 days and backwards plan into when they should expect that if that step six is essentially where the 90 days should end. So, Board, do you have comments or concerns based on the things I just mentioned?
I like all of those, actually. I think it, it clears up some-
Yes. Um, Board Member Thore?
I see nodding heads.
Okay.
Just the part, because it's absolutely right, it's the same with, you know, any other exceptional student education program. Once consent is signed, the clock starts ticking, and, and that became a law for a reason.
Yes. So if there's a way we could just clean it up a little bit, and then honestly, as, as a gifted parent who has signed permissions to screen, I would love if you, if they got this with a very clear timeline of what to expect and when, so that everyone knows what their mutually responsible timelines are, and how we can try to exceed expectation. So are there any further board comments about gifted?
I, I just have two other things. One, I, and I don't know if there's consent among board members on this, but I also am really passionate about, because I also see that IQ scores at certain levels that don't meet, meet eligibility in the seven, seven category here, that we create some kind of scale that would then give the opportunity to go to portfolio as opposed to just using this KBIT screener. And I don't know if everybody else agrees with that, but that is, is, well, I guess KBIT is early on. But I, I just, I'm, I'm really, I am concerned about not capturing every student that we could have portfolios on. And so again, maybe KBIT's earlier on. I'm, I'm just, I'm, I'm trying to make sure that we're not just thinking gifted, but also thinking high achieving, and ensuring, I, I know that gifted is the way the law reads, but we're trying to, again, try and fix some of that. So that, I don't know if anybody else has thoughts on portfolio versus just using an absolute end-all, be-all cut score? And if we had enough of us agree that we need to look a little more deeply into other students than just-
Yeah, I, I mean, I'm interested in that. I also am interested in, have we researched other screeners? Like, is, is this all that's available? We have two that's a universal screener that we're not happy with the results, because...
So we did also reach out to other districts in terms of the screeners that they use. And using a gifted screener, and there are two versions of the Naglieri. So the one that we used was the general ability. The one that I've used in previous districts was the, the non-verbal version of his assessment. And the results were similar. So, and the cost associated with only identifying few students is why many districts no longer use that one. There are some other paper-based measures and some other things. As a school psychologist, when I was doing evaluations, the Otis Lennon screening was a, a teacher nominated screening that was then done time intensive on the front end, but results were better on the back end with those nominations. So there are some things that, that we can definitely research more indepthly, and then look to see what's gonna be the best fit for us. Because districts are kind of all over the place. Most of them are landing on teacher nomination within a second layer, so that they're not testing everyone that is nominated. So I think if we can refine that second piece, because we, I agree that the teachers are gonna be our best source of information for potential giftedness in our students. And so then what would that next step look like for them, I think is where we are in terms of trying to fine tune what that next piece is, so that we can then get the right students to full evaluation by the school psychologist.
So I might ask, then, is there a potential to have a gifted update at some point before July? You know, going in, you guys spend some time looking for new screeners, talking about the advanced academics and the choice forums. Bring us back an update of how many students have chosen that as an elective? Are we gonna implement it? And have a gifted update conversation near the end of the school year, potentially leading into the summer? So that we can maybe discuss things and talk through what, if any, other changes we'd want to make ahead of the next school year?
Yes, that's fine.
Okay.
Okay, and can I-
Yeah, go ahead.
-make a request? As part of that update, I know you mentioned that you reached out to about 10 districts. And so I don't want to make this labor intensive, but you've got, you've shared with us two kind of a, a hot list today, you know, just what they did in Lake County and Brevard County. And when you, when you update us, can you share with us what the 10 districts you spoke with, what they did, similar to what you shared with Lake and Brevard? So we have an idea of what all is being done in, in the counties around us.
Absolutely.
All right, thank you so much.
Board, any further conversation?
The middle school conversation was what I was, the other thing I was gonna bring up, because I was looking just at slide nine again, that, you know, that's a snippet of something that's been taken from somewhere else. So I'm not sure what that, the middle school framework, subject-based structure, that's-
So we created, the picture we took from somewhere else.
Right.
The actual boxes is what we were looking at in terms of, as we look to more clearly define what we do in Marion County for middle schools, these are areas of focus. And so, you know, social emotional needs and concerns is always of our gifted learners is always an area of priority. And so in looking at where we want to be, that could fit into, you know, organizational self-management skills. So it would be, this is kind of just a framework of focus, and then we would tailor that, particularly through the academic class, in terms of what we feel our students need to know in order for that elective to be really beneficial for them.
Okay, perfect. I just knew that that graphic had come from somewhere else, because that was a number 52 in the upper right-hand corner. And I was like, okay, this entire slide came from somewhere else, and I was curious where the source was of, of, from where that had come. But nevertheless, that's what I was asking, potentially, that we get an update on what the future of middle school gifted models look like for our district. And potentially, obviously, session will end in March, if we get all the things and acting. And we also know this is a long game, we may not get what we're asking for this year, but if we could get a pilot going, and we may not get that this year. But we know that this is something that needs to be happening statewide, because other school board members, when we start bringing this up, they all agree. They're all like, huh, you know what? You're absolutely right. And, and I talk to lawmakers, and they'll be like, you know what? In middle school is when I kind of fell off the cliff, too. And so we all can, kind of identify, if you're either the parent of a gifted student, or you were a gifted student, Florida doesn't really do this well. I mean, I'm just frankly, honest, we may used to have done it well, but we're not doing it well right now.
Well, we did. When I, when I was in middle school, we had a separate gifted class. You went, you were pulled and went to gifted class.
Right. So, it, anyway.
But it stopped.
But it stopped. So like, again, we maybe used to do it well, potentially even when Dr. James was still there, but I, things have changed. And we gotta get back to some of the good old days, because we used to do things way better in some areas, as we've been talking. Thank you.
I think we have some firm next steps, and we'll come back and have a conversation in the late spring about a gifted update, understanding the, how we'll deliver middle school model potentially next year for Marion County. Maybe we'll have some decisions from the legislator, and we can just kind of have a little bit of an update from staff. But we are very thankful for the work you all did and brought forward to us today. Mr. Whitehouse, did you have anything to add?
Ma'am, I think we have some pretty clear next steps.
Awesome. Is there any public comment on this item? Okay, wonderful. Well, thank you, ladies, for being here today. Board, we're gonna just go through 6.1. Attorney Powers and I have discussed that, you know, we're gonna have a workforce housing discussion. We're gonna get a, a brief update with concise next steps as a board that we need to decide on how we're gonna proceed. So I will hand it over to Attorney Powers to kick us off for the workforce housing discussion, item 6.1.
Thank you, and I'll try to keep a five-minute timer here to give you the details of what-
Ooh, I like it.
Okay. As you know, we successfully resolved nearly all the lease terms that were unclear or problematic through multiple meetings with Upward over the past few months. So Upward's been cooperative in that respect. The point was to narrow it down to focus to those issues that are harder to resolve. We've been waiting for Upward to provide a memo, final memorandum of law justifying certain details of their lease, ownership, taxation theories of their business model in a way that we can verify, like cat case law, statutory sites, attorney general's opinions. We've only received, not, received non-final drafts of that, so we don't have it. The proposal that they submitted also did not, and it was a 3P, PPP structure, also did not contain significant financial details. So I've been in conversation with our finance department, and also with our, with our Department of Ms. Usher with facilities in order to go over some of those details. So in the interim, I commissioned our bond coun, our bond counsel to review and report any potential negative impacts on our debt credit ratings, because that's one of the big issues that we're gonna, gonna need to deal with. Board, as is the proposal they submitted, I, I would recommend rejection, as well as I believe that that is an opinion shared by other staff. I'll let them speak for themselves, but in my conversations, it's not viable at the point that we're at, not with the projections we have. It's not to say it couldn't change. But what they submitted, what they've turned into us, is not a viable way of going about things, because we don't have those financial projections. We also, I had George Smith, our bond counsel, review specifically as to the consequences it could have to our, to our bond rating. He did review those. His indication was that the debt ratings issued in connection with school terms, the school board's long-term debt, those obligations would increase under the master lease, since the school board guarantees the teachers' rents, rent payments. That proposes some problems for us, and it does create issues that would lead to a decision the board needs to make. One is, do we reject at this point the project? Tell them, go back and get it to a structure that is going to work for us? Do you want staff, including myself, to continue to work with them to build it, as opposed to just having them submit a project to us? Because as of right now, staff, the attorney, are, are working with them and putting in a lot of resources to do those things. Or the third option would be to hire a feasibility consultant? And the feasibility consultant is what our bond council has recommended if we want to go forward. If we want to go forward, we need somebody to do a deep dive into this and determine exactly what degree of risk this presents to our bond ratings. It's a project which has good potential. It is also one which is currently not ripe on the vine. So it would require some additional work. And at this point, if we are going to consider and continue, then we would need to make sure that we have the ability to, to review that structure. And that would require somebody specifically as a feasibility consultant to do so. Now, the only other thing that I will add is that beyond a feasibility consultant, the exception or rejection of the project is submitted at this stage. At this stage, we don't have financial projections to be able to say this is a good enough idea to accept. We like the idea. I think everybody, the board has all, has all discussed that. I've discussed that. I like the idea. I believe staff likes the idea. The practicalities, and it's, it's simply a matter of the fact that there are, there is a considerable amount at stake when it comes to our bond and debt ratings, that, and it is a very long-term commitment. And as a result, it warrants very careful consideration, because we need to be sure, we need to be certain. And this is a project which is so far unique under Florida law. It's not been done here. There are other entities, governmental entities, that have been approached with the same process, and they are inken deals. But those deals are not also, those deals aren't the completion level that we have. It's, it's, they're, they're, they're dealing with those at the more rudimentary level. Yes, we want to work with you, we'll figure out the details later. In order for us to move forward, we want to get those details upfront. So those are the discuss, discussion points for the board, or decision points for the board. At this point, we'll go through the process of either accepting, rejecting the, it's not a decision the board has to make today, it's something that, that submitted as a PPP. Ms. Usher and I and, and Mr. Welsh can address that further. But I think that at this point, you know which direction we're going with that. But if it is to be considered again, or considered in more detail, and we don't even know for certain yet that they are willing to do so. What we do know is that there's been some discussion as to whether they want to continue moving forward this project with us, or whether they don't want to continue, and I don't know the answer to that. So I've reached out to their attorney in order to have them give us an answer on that. I can't communicate directly with them, I have to communicate via their attorney. So we'll find out some answers as to which direction they want to go as well.
All right, Board, so to summarize, and then we'll take questions. I just want to summarize what, what Attorney Powers has asked us. I just want to summarize what Attorney Powers has asked us. Our options essentially, which can be decided today or not, are to accept or reject the bid that the proposal that we have in front of us, to continue to massage the bid that we have in front of us and try to figure out how to get to an end zone, which probably will require us to purchase some feasibility work to be done. So the three options are outlined there, accept or reject, continue to work it out, and then feasibility, feasibility study, I believe is the framework he used. So, board, let's open it up to questions, comments. Board member.
Thank you, yes, and I heard what you said loud and clear. I also agree that this for us probably isn't ready for prime time. However, what continues to resonate in my mind is that at the beginning teacher's salary in Florida, teachers cannot afford to live on their own. So we really need to be mindful of opportunities to attract great talent to our county. And these kinds of partnerships, I believe are probably going to be part of the future. We know that workforce, affordable workforce housing is a crisis in this county. The first two things that jump into my mind are, well, there's no point in having further conversation if they don't want to continue. So we need to get that question answered. If they do want to continue, what I would want to know is what would be the cost of this feasibility consultant? Because I'm not interested in compromising our bond rating without really deep expertise and advice. The other thing that's on my mind is that I believe it's Hayes County, Texas, that's supposed to be doing this and maybe a little further down the road in their progress, maybe, maybe not, haven't heard an update on that recently. But that would be something that I would be watching, you know, what's happening in other states where these partnerships are being cultivated. I don't want to throw the baby out with the bathwater because I think it's a great concept. I agree with that, but we need to really make sure we have specific questions answered and continue to proceed with caution. And thank you very much for all the due diligence so far. I know it's been a lot of work for staff that has was unanticipated, but anytime there's a new and innovative idea, it's, the idea is great, you know, it's the, hate to invite the devil under the room, but that's where the details are, you know? So those are my immediate thoughts.
Board member Conrad?
Thank you, Attorney Powers, for that update. I agree, when this was presented, it really was a pie in the sky. We were all super excited, but there has been some challenges along the way. And I do, my thoughts align pretty closely to board member throwers. Another question that I have is, have we received any input from our staff? Like, do they feel there's a need? I know that Upwards did their own survey, but I don't believe the boards received any information on how our staff, the people that are working for us now, feel about this idea, you know, how much interest is there in our area? And so I'm interested in knowing that. I also want to know how much a consultation, how much we're looking at that would, how much that would cost us? And then also, I'd like to know how much, how many hours our staff has already put into this project? Because I know initially in the position of chair, I know that Terry spent 40 hours on the initial kickoff just of this contract lease agreement. So I'm just interested, I know each area is putting in a lot of work that was not anticipated, not that it's not a great idea, but I'd like to know as we're moving forward, how much time has been invested by our staff to get this up and in front of us?
Mr. Whitehouse can probably work on the staff side of it.
Yeah.
I'm sure Attorney Powers can speak for his staff, but I think otherwise, Mr. Whitehouse, we would just need to know that number from your side of the table.
Just an approximation. I just, every time you visit with a department, they're sharing, you know, this is hours and hours. It's been very labor intensive for our team because the agreement that came to us was not anywhere near being being ready for us to sign. So anyway, those are the comments I have.
Okay, and I'm keeping a log of everything, so I'll recap at the end.
All right, thank you.
Reverend Cummings?
We, we were presented with this some months ago and everyone that heard the presentation thought it was a great presentation, great idea. I've talked to other counties that are also doing some type of workforce housing or whatever. It is, it's awesome, awesome proposal. However, at the risk of our bond rating, it's not an awesome proposal. At the risk of the things that's going, it's going to cost us right now, I'm not saying kick it all off the table, but I'm just saying right now, I don't think, I think we need to be cautious in how we approach this, this venture. And as Vice Chair Conrad just said, we don't even know if our staff want this. They haven't expressed an overwhelming interest in this being brought forth through our district. And then I just think right now, there's, there's red lights and there's yellow lights. And I think we're seeing some yellow lights right now and we need to move cautious.
And if I may, I believe that it's very possible that nearly anyone who heard the idea of a reduced cost workplace housing is going to say, yes, we want it. Who wouldn't? The only question becomes, we didn't receive any financial projections.
Right.
And whatever financial projections we would receive would need to be based on some, you know, some formula, something that tells us why we, because if it, if it doesn't work out that way, then the, the actual amount saved is perhaps not much different than renting anywhere. If it works out gangbusters, then wonderful, it's a big savings. We don't know that and we can't, other than just saying, well, you know, we hope, we don't have that information.
The other piece to that is, as I said, I've talked to other districts that are doing some type of workforce housing. Orange County is doing some things, Osceola County is doing some things. It's not necessarily that they did, they use the same model that this is being presented to us. Ms., Dr. Campbell was there where we heard presentations where as developers were building apartments, they allocated so many apartments within their complex for their school district at a reasonable discount. So there's other ways that we can look at this. There's other models that we can still accomplish the same thing. I'm just not sure right now that this, this model is going to be right for Marion County, especially with the yellow lights and the red lights that I'm seeing. So that's where I'm at with this. And definitely, you're talking about feasibility study, how much is that going to cost us?
I don't know the answer to that. I would first need to find out who we would hire for such a feasibility study and then...
And that would be a cost that we would incur that...
I would say that the amount of time I would want them to do in order to do a deep dive would not be, would not be inexpensive.
Correct.
Dr. Campbell?
So my belief is that we should pause and not reject. So that's going to be, because I don't like the word reject at all because that makes it sound like we have absolutely no interest to move forward with anything with Upward communities. What I believe to be potentially occurring is them understanding the bond rating challenges that they did not understand in the state of Florida and understanding that not every district has certificate of participation that they're dealing with. So I understand those two things. I also believe that they have the potential to work with other municipalities within Marion County to then create projects that would allow us to do an interlocal agreement with those said municipalities. So if we use the word reject, it seems to me as if we would be saying, we don't even want to entertain that thought.
I agree completely with what you're saying.
Right, so I am not in the rejection phase whatsoever. I, that was a recommendation. No, 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 it was a, it was a word that Attorney Powers used as one of the options. So I just want to ensure that we're not using that one as an option on the table. Because I do think that, I mean, they did ink a deal in Franklin County, like it's already moving forward, but it's because Franklin has their county working directly with their school district and so they're working in a collaborative. And so that's, they're going to actually be ahead of us, which is, is fine. It is what it is. Again, certificate of participation is causing challenges that they weren't anticipating, is my understanding. So I am in a pause phase. I don't think our district staff needs to do anything else on this right now. This is my, from this seat, from all that I know about this. Just sit on it and let's wait and see if and when they get something in the works with one of our other municipalities or multiple municipalities. There's lots of conversations happening at those levels. And then that would require an interlocal agreement just with that municipality or multiple municipalities on how many of those units would be set aside for Marion County Public Schools. In the interim, to Reverend Cummings' point, it doesn't hurt for our district staff as a recruitment and retention effort to start trying to talk to local communities that are being built. What it looks like to set aside five, 10 units for our employees specifically, that's how Orange County is doing it, they have 21,000 employees. So if they're getting 10 here, 10 there, it's barely scratching the surface, but they have dozens of those started and they're going to continue to work in that direction. To the point of our staff wanting this or not, I believe in the staff that I've spoken with, and I know that they've at least spoken to our largest school staff and we're going to be speaking to others, but they're not now. I mean, all of that's on pause, but I believe that our staff was kind of like a wait and see. They're not going to come out and say, absolutely, I want to do that because they kind of thought it wasn't going to happen anyway. And so that, that's where I, I think staff is kind of sitting and based on what we're talking about right now, it very well might not happen. And so why jump out and say, yes, I am ready to sell my home and move into this if that's not even something that's going to be on the table in a year to three years from now? So that's where I sit.
And I'll just say, I echo a lot of the sentiments that have been shared today. So in an effort to summarize while also sharing my own opinion, I think one of the things that was mentioned is, do they want to continue working with Marion County Public Schools? So I would love a conversation to occur where, I heard things just Saturday night at an event, I was sitting at a table of someone who's been to our meetings on behalf of Upward, who shared testaments that were very different than the conversation we're having today. So I'm not sure we're all on the same page, meaning us and them, about where we are in this process. And so I, you know, if they want to continue, I would love, even just as one board member, and maybe I'm unique, but I would love for Upward to articulate what their needs are because I would love to figure out how to make something work for our community, but to also validate all of the concerns that have been mentioned by the board and by you, Attorney Powers. So I'd like to know, do they want to continue? And we've heard that from other board members. We'd like to know if we did a feasibility study or consultation, how much would that cost? If we can get a quote for understanding that in the scope of what that work would cost? And I've heard a couple of different board members request a survey to staff. Maybe it's vague, Mr. Christian, maybe that could be something that gets worked on from your department about, you know, to our staff, if this were to be an option, would you be interested? Something along those lines so that we have some form of basis to understand what workforce housing, what a desire for workforce housing could look like. And maybe that's more of a survey to say, what are their current living arrangements? Are you renting? Are you owning? Do you have roommates? Are you living independently? Do you live with your parents? Are you looking for a permanent housing? Are you looking for homeownership? Do you want to stay a renter? Those are the kinds of questions I would think a survey would have, not necessarily the desire for workforce housing opportunity, but more to understand the housing situation that our employees are currently in, which Mr. Christian, I'm sure can hash out with staff and kind of figure out what that could look like. But those were the things that I summarized from everyone. Is there anything I missed? Board member.
I agree with the, wholeheartedly with the survey and getting a baseline because I know having had rental properties, I've had tons of interest through the years, including, you know, we have a little detached guest house. I mean, there, there is a sense of desperation in trying to find somewhere to live, especially if they have a dog or a cat that's in a safe neighborhood. And I 100% agree that we don't want to squelch the opportunity for vibrant partnerships to blossom. This is an issue. I will go on the record to say that this is an issue and that if we can find some ways to creatively solve it with our community partners, other elected entities, and, you know, continually, as you said, I agree with you, Board Member Campbell, at this point, a pause is necessary because we have questions that need to be answered before we can move forward anymore anyway.
Yep.
So, so those are, those are my definite thoughts and I would love to be at the forefront of providing for our employees innovative ways to not only come to work for us, but stay working for us. And the state of Colorado has done some really good work in this respect. In fact, an AD that we lost to Colorado can weigh in on the nice townhouse he's living in at a very cheap price. So.
So we can, I think that kind of summarizes, oh, board member Cummings?
And I love the idea of the survey. In that survey, I would love to see some type of numbers where our staff would feel is a comfortable or a good number as far as...
What they can afford?
What they can afford.
And what they're paying now, right? You know, what are they paying now for what are they getting and what they could afford?
And type of housing.
Yeah.
So the, the type of housing and I think that if we were to ask them like what they could afford, I think it needs to be based on like a percentage of their current income as opposed to like a dollar amount. Because again, this kind of is a learning thing for everybody, but people may think that they can afford only 10% of their current salary. Well, that, that's not also logical. So just want to make sure we don't necessarily put a dollar amount on that. But I like the thought process of how you would conduct the survey. I don't personally want the survey to say, would you be interested in at all?
No, I just, I think it's a, it's a workforce housing survey. So I mean, it's a, it's a current employee housing survey. So what, what does your housing situation look like currently as an employee of Marion County Public Schools?
I, I will be interested to see how many people actually complete the survey because it does feel like a really intrusive kind of question to be asking. But it has to be framed from the perspective of Marion County Public Schools is currently looking at how other districts are addressing workforce housing needs of their employees. With that in mind, we would like to ask the following questions. I mean, something to, and you can go back and listen to how I just said that, but, and is this going to be every employee, all, almost 7,000?
Absolutely.
The other districts, well, you were there.
I was.
Every employee, whether it's a bus driver, whatever.
Right.
It was extended to every employee in the district.
Yep.
Definitely in that survey, type and size of housing, whether you look at apartments, duplexes, small houses, what, I would like to know all those.
Renting a room in a house?
Right, right, right. Like a dorm, you know, if it's a single person, my daughter, when she was in college, you know, they had the four things, but they all had their own bathroom.
Right, the suite.
You know what I'm talking about?
Yeah, the closets. Yep, so I think we've kind of summarized, oh, board member.
One other thing, Mr. Christian, this is a question for you because I don't know how to word it, but in speaking with people at schools, teachers and other staff, the response I get first is, just pay us more, just pay us more. And so is there a way in there to include that this really is a community conversation? We're looking for some of the things that were shared here at the end, it may be a community partnership, so it's not, it's not just Marion County Public Schools paying more because we already know that 78% of our budget is, goes out to paying our staff. And so there's not a lot of wiggle room there.
They allocate so much for salaries.
Right, and so I just, I don't want them to feel like flippantly, oh, just pay us more and that's the answer to everything because we really are looking for some community partnerships and how to help build up our community as a whole.
And then essentially then they would be getting paid more.
Correct, yes. But that's not what they say first off.
Oh, I know.
All right, thank you for that, Dr. James.
So I think we, we have a work session December 18th, so about a month from now. So I would love to see this as an agenda item on December 18th and maybe we can have had some, some answers to the questions we asked, cost of a feasibility consultant, potentials for a survey to go out either before Christmas or after. And does Upward want to continue working with us? Is this a mutually beneficial relationship and do they see a desire to continue working with us as well? And so we'll, I would love for us to be able to get a refresh on all of that at the end of December. Um, and so will, I would love for us to be able to get a refresh on all of that, uh, at the end of December before we go on winter break. And then we can kind of go from there, Board. Does that sound like something that works for everybody?
Okay, I can answer the Upward community ish. I mean, I can get answers to that. I can also try to envision what a feasibility consultant's going to be and, and get with probably our bond attorney and find somebody that might be able to give me a quote on that role, but it's going to be.
That's fine.
Going to be vague. I can't, you know, it'll be difficult to say something very specific. Uh, as far as the survey goes, kind of out of my area, so.
Yeah, but I think Mr. Christian has a good idea. He's been taking notes and I'm sure Mr. Whitehouse and Dr. Brewer can work on what some next steps for that could look like. All right, um, anything to add, Mr. Whitehouse?
No, just a clarification that we are going to pause any other staff work on this particular project with the exception of obviously what's going to be required for developing the survey.
I believe we've all agreed that we're going to take a deep breath and pause here and look at gathering some more information so we can have a, a most informed next step forward if we decide to proceed. Okay. Is there any public comment on this item? All right. Hearing none, we will go into, uh, Board Member, um, Committee Reminder, uh, Meeting Reminders. We do have a special administrative briefing and work session scheduled for December 1st, 2025 at 9:00 a.m. Um, the topic there is solely to discuss the superintendent search. So if the community is interested in participating in that discussion, we will be receiving information and feedback from the firm we've hired on that. Uh, we will then have a school board meeting December 9th at 5:00 p.m., 5:30 p.m. And a special board meeting on December 18th at 7:00 a.m. for expulsion matters, followed by a briefing and work session at 9:00 a.m. Um, we will go into Board Member comments. Attorney Powers, do you have anything?
I do not. Thank you.
Okay, uh, Ms. Martinez Young? And Mr. Whitehouse?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. A few things I would like to share. Uh, first of all, Ms. Connor's been, uh, displaying this nice T-shirt for me as a reminder that today is, uh, National Great American Smokeout Day, and we appreciate our partnership with fans, um, to make sure that we are providing education to our students on making healthy life decisions. And, and this is a part of that work. So we, we certainly, uh, value and support that effort. Um, we did last Friday get to recognize our principal and assistant principal of the year for this school year. So we were able to surprise, uh, Ms. Lori Manresa, Principal at Hillcrest, as our principal of the year. And, uh, Ms. Aisha Pete at North Marion High School is our A P of the year. Uh, we have some fabulous administrators in this district that work really hard to support the, our schools, our teachers, our students. Um, and it was great to be able to, to honor two of them, uh, for the work that they're doing as shining examples of, of all of our administrators. And we look forward to them continuing on in the state process. Uh, we did begin our strategic planning this past Monday on the 17th. Um, we had a, a great showing of support from folks not only within our school system, but we had, uh, community members, parents, uh, business members that attended. We had a student member, um, which was really great to have Luke Lombardo as a part of that conversation. He was fantastic. Um, throughout that, and, um, I, I felt we really had some great conversation about laying the foundation for our new strategic plan. Um, and I'm going to come at a future work session to be able to share some of those conversations with you all, to engage you all in that foundational work that we're doing with the new strategic plan. Um, and, and to continue to work through that process. And we will have lots more to come on that in the coming months. Uh, just a reminder to families, schools are closed next week for Thanksgiving break and we certainly wish everybody, um, a wonderful Thanksgiving season and time for us to be able to remember all the things we are thankful for, um, and to spend time with family and loved ones. Um, but it's also time for us to remember that we have a lot of people in our community that are in need. Um, and, and not everybody is in the same place. And it, it really warms my heart when we go to schools and we see a lot of our schools are trying to support that effort with food drives, with coat drives. Um, part of our responsibility in public education is also teaching civic responsibility and community service. And we've got a great showing of that of, of our schools that are really trying to lift each other up, to support our families and community members that are in need. Um, and really make sure that we're embracing all those around us and, and showing support and love for our community. And so we certainly play our role in that part. That's all my comments.
Thank you, Mr. Whitehouse. We'll take it down to Dr. Campbell.
Thank you. Uh, just briefly, I was grateful for the time I just spent at the Excel and Ed National Summit, flew in last night. That is a jam-packed session of basically two days, but actually more like 36 hours. Sessions I attended included Pathways That Matter, Keeping Up With AI, The Power of Data in Education, An Update on Federal Education Policy, Phones in Focus, Turnaround of New Orleans Schools, which is fascinating, by the way, Crisis Leadership, Reimagining Rural Education, and The State of Modern Discourse. Just a lot of notes I took and can't wait to come back, to, can't wait to sit down with Dr. Brewer and talk through some of the things that we might be able to do apart from just waiting on ed policy to change. I think there's a lot that can be done, uh, that we can just kind of reimagine how we've done some things. So, um, that was a wonderful time and just happy Thanksgiving to everyone out there. And I appreciate what Mr. Whitehouse just shared because it's an imperative time for us to be grateful for the things that we have and the blessings that we've received, but also understand that not everyone has the same resources and opportunities that we all have. We should be blessed for the ones that we have, but also continue to be a blessing to others. That's it.
Thank you. Reverend Cummings?
Thank you, uh, Chair, Chair James. Um, this is, it's been a very productive meeting once again this morning, a great, two great presentations that we've heard. Um, I do want to say, as, as Mr. Whitehouse said, Dr. Campbell, this is that time of the year where, um, we should be grateful every day, but we should also realize that some of us are in different places than other people. And everybody doesn't, some people look like they're doing well, but they don't, not necessarily doing well. So we have to take those things into consideration and be mindful of that. And, um, even some of our staff, being able to look at our staff that are, that show up every day, that put it in every day, and yet, um, they moments away from being homeless or hungry. So we have to remember to, to think about that when we, um, when we do things. So, um, I'm, I'm praying that, um, if there's people out there that need resources or, or, or going short somewhere, that they reach out to different folk because there are some helps out there for different folk. And even that, like I said, even our staff members as well. Um, we would be surprised who we walk by every day on the campus or in the hallway who, who has legitimate need, but they're, they don't, they don't want, they don't, they, they can't allow themselves to be seen in a certain light. So, um, I, I encourage our leaders in the district to, to observe your people. And where you can help, help, um, where you need some help, reach out to others that may can be able to help you in those situations. Um, looking forward to being, being off next week. God knows I am. Looking forward to some time away. I think all of us need a little bit, a little bit of time away because we were, we're running. When, when, uh, Dr. Campbell came in, her voice was as deep as mine this morning.
Yes.
I say, you sound like me today.
I know.
So, 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 um, and, and this is the time of the year where we get to celebrate family. So it's a festive time. Um, I know we have the, our, our Christmas parade coming up on the 13th. Looking forward to that. I saw the text about, uh, the float and everything like that. But also this is the time of the year that y'all always kind of get me. So I'm, I'm going to jump out first and say this. So let's go ahead and put on the calendar, Chair James, about ugly sweater, uh, ugly sweater, um, meeting. Um, we have a meeting on the 9th and we have a work session on the 18th. I want us to declare today that that's going to be ugly sweater work session and ugly sweater board, board meeting. Jeremy?
On the 18th?
The 9th is the board meeting and the 18th.
Oh, we're doing it on the board meeting night too? Okay.
We're going to do both. And everybody, everybody, everybody. Elena, you too. Ben, you too. But everybody, I think that's, I think that's a great way for us to go into the holiday season. Um, even encourage those who are coming and recognitions to wear their ugly sweaters. So, sometimes we just need to, sometimes the healing comes through smiling. And we may need to do it that way. So that's my ask.
You got it, boss. And Ms. Connor will have to communicate with our student board reps. Thank, I, thank you for being here, Ms. Connor. That's perfect timing.
Mr. Welsh, don't come in here in no suit, Kevin. Put it out there right now. So ample time to go to amazon.com. Jeremy, you too.
He gets in the spirit.
That's my comments.
He'll, he'll have his hat on.
Yeah, he'll have that. And the rain there.
And some flashing lights.
Yeah.
All right, uh, Board Member Conrad.
All right. Thank you, um, Chair James. I have just a few things. Um, Dr. James, I wanted to thank you and Dr. Campbell for the conversation earlier. We were winding up, so I didn't, um, slide this in. But the Fast Fact video with our county commissioners, um, that's an idea that I shared with Dr. Brewer, um, early on. Because I was, you know, they were coming across my feed and I thought, this is a great tool. Um, so anyway, I wanted to thank both of you for sharing that because I, I do think, um, there's some opportunity, uh, there for us to share our story and the work that we're doing, um, in a three-minute segment. So anyway, thank you for that. And then I'm going to steal Reverend Cummings' saying, healing comes with smiling. And so I have several, um, things I just wanted to say thank you, um, for. Um, this last week, we went to, um, Buddy Oswald invited us to the Braver Angels meeting, and I just wanted to say thank you. Two other board members showed up to that meeting. Um, and I don't know how you felt when you left, but I was really proud that there were three school board meeting, school board members there. Um, our mayor was there. We had several, um, city councilmen there. And so it was great to be in that space together. Um, so I just appreciate you all taking time. Uh, we didn't know, you never know who's going to be where, but I was happy to see you there. And so thank you for taking, um, that time. I also wanted to say thank you to our staff. We had a town hall meeting at North Marion. It was very successful. Um, it went very well, but it required all of our staff to be there, uh, you know, all evening, the whole evening. So I'm just really grateful. The work never stops. Um, those are the things you may not see, uh, you know, on the other end of the television screen. But I'm just really, really grateful for that. Um, a dedicated team. I'm in the middle, actually winding up Golden Apple Observation. So excited. I get to turn those in today or tomorrow. Megan, if you're listening, they're done. Um, so anyway, just really excited to move on to the next, uh, phase of that. It's always fun to be able to. We're on campuses as board members, but I don't get to get in classrooms, you know, like I used to. So it's, um, really fills my cup to be in classrooms and seeing teachers and students, um, doing what they do every day. Um, we had a great time at the FFO Art Show at the Appleton. Really a great opportunity for our students that are artists and, you know, that is their gift, um, to be showcased in such a nice, um, environment. Seeing the Appleton, getting, being able to see all of those students and their administrators, their art teachers, all in one space. So that's always, um, a fun time and I'm just thankful for that opportunity. Um, Board members, I did want to ask, think a teacher is on Friday? There's two. I didn't know who would say, okay, you're able to go to both?
Yes, ma'am. I'll be at both.
And you're away? Okay. One. The first one or second one, do you know? The second one. Okay. Dr. Campbell, what's your calendar like?
I have them on my calendar. The hope is that I'll be able to get out of my other meeting to do that.
Okay, because I'm kind of in that same predicament. The, the first one may be hard for me to get to, but I will be at the second one. I just wanted to make sure we were represented.
I will be at the first one for sure.
Okay. Perfect. Okay, great. Thank you all. Um, that's always a, a fun and exciting time too. Um, and a reminder that Friday, we have our attendance boundaries advisory committee meeting. It's the first one. Friday at 4 o'clock here at M T I and.
Do you all submit names?
Yes, well, to the best of my knowledge, we've all submitted names and we're ready to go. Quick. We are thankful, thankful, so thankful to the community, those of you that said yes to serving on this committee because it was, um, a very quick turnaround. So we're just really grateful, um, for our community for stepping in and helping us accomplish this. So, um, wishing everyone a happy and safe Thanksgiving. All right, that's all I have.
Member Thore?
Thank you. And I will share my own, uh, hopes for a safe and peaceful and wonderful Thanksgiving, um, for, for everyone. And there is a lot to be grateful for, you know, having the opportunity to make a positive impact, um, every single day is something that I continue to cherish. I'd like to give an extra hug to Four King Middle School. Um, it was, it just continues to be really hard on my heart. Um, and when you're in the thick of it, with what kids and, and staff, um, directly experience, um, during those emergencies, is hard to describe. You know, you do what you have to do in the moment, but when it's all over and I have the opportunity to reflect, I just continue to, uh, pray hard for a shift in society that is greatly needed, uh, sooner than later. Um, so we, we, we all deserve that. So with, with that, I am looking forward to ugly, uh, two opportunities for ugly sweaters. Maybe I shouldn't admit that I have a lot of ugly sweaters. I'll have a chance to show them off. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Board, we got an update for the committees and I was going to disperse it, but I actually realized there is a committee missing. Um, probably about six months ago, I was asked to join the local technology planning team, which is called the L T P T. So I'm going to have Ms. Martinez Young add that to the list and then, um, we'll disperse that list just to make sure everyone's okay with it. But, um, that meets monthly on Mondays in the afternoon, um, talking about broadband expansion in Marion County. So, um, it's been nice because we've been able to connect them with schools and get into schools to give parents information about access to internet at home. So that's been great. Um, I want to, uh, shout out to the North End and Ms. Pete for Assistant Principal of the Year. That was wonderful to be able to attend. There's just so many wonderful things that are happening on our campuses. Lots of Thanksgiving lunches at our elementary schools. Um, I got to, I was grateful, actually, this is the first year I was able to attend my own children's because normally they're on Thursday and we have a work session. And so it was yesterday and so I was able to attend. And it's such a good magical time on elementary campuses. So as we go into the holidays, I hope everyone has a safe holiday and week off. And remember that attendance matters and we expect you back bright and shiny on Monday when you come back from break. Board, in your inboxes, you would have seen some calendar invites for the Martin Luther King activities. We received some very timely, um, information and emailed to us. So I had Ms. Martinez Young just send it out. Board, if you would be able to, as we approach the dates, um, change your R S V Ps accordingly so we can make sure we have representation there, that would be tremendous. I wanted, because once it's on our calendar, then we can all see it. Um, but I did make sure it was all on everyone's calendar so you guys, um, will know when all the events are. Um, the Okala, I also submitted our, um, request to be in the parade as well. So Ms. Martinez Young will get that submitted on our behalf. The Tourism Annual Meeting is coming up. This may have landed in your inboxes. It did not, I found it in my spam. So I wanted to bring it to your attention because I was contacted by, um, Samantha Solomon. The meeting is December 11th. Um, it is from 8:00 to 10:30 and there are guest speakers. Our, our presence has been requested. And so I didn't know if anyone was intending to already go. Uh, Dr. Campbell, I see a head nod, so Dr. Campbell is intending to go?
It's, yes, it's World Equestrian Center. And, and, um, I, I had it on my calendar for another reason. So I didn't actually get the invite this way, but I'm intending to be there.
I cannot attend. I have an event that day.
Okay. Um, I also had a few other things booked that day, so it was going to be a struggle for me to go. But Dr. Campbell, would it be appropriate for you to kind of represent from both factors since you were already planning to attend?
That's fine.
It is, um, there's a Breakfast and Trades show at 8:00 and the formal program is 9:30 to 10:30 at Expo 2 of the World Equestrian Center.
Have we got an invite for it?
Well, um, I, I don't know. I couldn't find the email. And so, um, I can have, um, I forwarded Ms. Martinez Young the invite so she can forward it to the whole board so you guys can see it. Um, but I wanted to bring it to your attention because our, I did get a personal phone call about trying to have a board representation there.
Let's see some type of graduation on that day.
Uh, but this is in the morning. Yes. And so I do think M T C does, or, or Acceleration Academy.
Is at 1:00.
Is at 1:00. So theoretically, we can do both, yes. Um, but I'm attending the E L C board meeting that morning. Is, I've been trying to attend their board meetings. And so, um, anyhow. So I was kind of tied up. So Board, if that's okay, um, Ms. Martinez Young, you could forward that out? That'd be wonderful. Um, Day in the Legislator is in January. Ms. Martinez Young, what is the timeline you need for the board to provide their request to go for accommodations and registration? Okay, coming up. So Board, I was trying to reflect back last year. I think Dr. Campbell was the only one that went to Day in the Legislator. Is that, was that a correct reflection?
Yes.
Okay. Day in the Legislator is Wednesday and Thursday, January 28th and 29th, um, Board. And I don't know if you have received the information yet or not, but, um, it is a afternoon on Wednesday and then a Thursday, um, legi- on Wednesday, and then a Thursday legislator meeting, so I wanted to bring it to your attention. We can discuss it now, or we can discuss at a later date, but I do know in December, we'll certainly need to get the information to Ms. Martinez Young if you intend to stay in a hotel room and/or get registered for the event. It's an F S B A Day in the Legislature.
Okay. So I just would like to know, Reverend Cummings, are you going to be able to, do you want to attend that, January twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth? Allison, I'm sorry, I'm assuming you're going.
I'm already registered, yes.
You're unsure?
It's the twenty-eighth.
January twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth.
Yeah.
You're going?
Yes.
Okay. So Eric's planning to go. Nancy, how does that look for you?
Uh, I'm going to need a little time on that one.
Okay. All right. And I'm a maybe, too, so Dr. Campbell, I'll, I will get up with you to ask about that.
Yeah.
And we can, we can, I can bring it back up. Ms. Martinez Young, if you'll just connect with me on the deadlines you need for us to make a decision, and maybe in our first board meeting of December, I will make sure I bring it back up, if you can help me remember that, Ms. Martinez Young.
Because the hotels are on your own, so I mean, it's just, she'll pick a hotel and, and book one.
Yes, yes. And if I recall, I think two years ago, we were all there. I remember getting tacos. That's one thing I remember.
Yeah, we walked.
We were, we were all there. Yes, we walked and got tacos. So, I don't, it's a core memory, I guess. So anyhow, so I just, we'll, we'll bring it back up in a couple weeks and just kind of finalize that. I, oh, one last thing. Mr. McFadden sent us an email while we were in the work session regarding a demo on December sixteenth. I know I am not available at that time. I will be on a first-grade field trip to the zoo in Tampa, so if the rest of the board is available, that's fine. The date that he sent was December sixteenth at twelve P M.
I've accepted it.
Okay, hold on, I'm looking, because I don't remember.
I'll be out of town that day, so.
Okay. I am available.
I might be available.
Okay, so we have two yeses and a maybe, and two noes, so I don't know if that will be desirable to attend or not. It certainly can happen without me there, but I wanted to make sure that we touched